Good evening, West Orange. It is January 5th, 2016. And we are going to begin tonight with the Council Committee Agenda. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was emailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on October 14th, 2015. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the municipal clerk of the township of West Orange on October 14th, 2015. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kukovia?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Cirillo?
Present. Before we begin, I do want to say that I'm happy to see one of my colleagues back, Councilman Guarino. Not only do we want to thank him for his service as council president this last year, but he recently went on really difficult medical procedure, and we were praying for you.
Thank you.
And we're happy to see your smile back and your energy.
Thank you, Councilman.
Walking up and down the council chambers. I'm happy to see that. And if you wish to share with the public more about, you know, your experience, it's a happy story, and I'm happy that you're here.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. And thank you. Thank you to my colleagues. All I can say is it was an experience, but I can also recommend to everyone that just make sure you live a heart-healthy environment. Make sure you take care of yourself. Don't put things off to the very last minute because it could mean the difference of life and death. And thanks to the prayers and of my family, my friends, and especially my council colleagues and my friends in the administration, I made it. And doctors say I'm going to be here for a very, very, very long time. So, but thank you, Council President Cirillo.
Thank you.
And thank you to my colleagues for your thoughts and your prayers and your letters and everything. So, thank you very much. It's good to be here.
Thank you, Councilman. We have an office.
Yes, we do.
Madam Clerk? Go ahead. Okay. Thank you, Megan. We have to go through this procedure so that I can legally run this meeting or constitutionally, right?
Yeah. You got him in.
Left hand on the Bible, right hand?
Camera.
Left hand on the Bible, right hand?
That's good. This doesn't mean we're married, right? No, I don't have that authority. I state your name.
I, Victor Cirillo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same and to the governments established.
To the same and to the governments established.
In the United States and in this state.
In the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of council president to the best of my ability.
Perform all the duties of council president to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So we can run this meeting now constitutionally.
Yes, you can.
We're okay.
It's all legal.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have one more little presentation.
We have one more presentation.
We have one more presentation.
One more presentation. But I'll come up here and do it.
How many first names and titles? Victor, I've learned a lot from my council colleagues and particularly yourself. And in my past years as council president, it's been a great and gratifying experience. Also, how we've all come together, we've worked on some great things, we've made the township an even better township than it has, and we've shown people that when you come together as a family and as a group, a lot can be accomplished. I've learned a lot from you. I've watched your experience, your leadership, and I'm proud again to have you as our council president. I wish you much success. I wish you the same success that we've had this year and even more success. Your family should be very proud of you, as we, as your colleagues, we are very proud of you too. So, not to go on and on, but again, I want to present you with a gavel and to lead us as our leader and our council president and for great 2016 and to thank you for everything.
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you.
Now you have two gavels.
Now you have an official gavel.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're very welcome, sir.
I still stand by the kind words that I expressed towards you.
Thank you.
The last meeting. We're going to move on to council liaison announcements. Councilwoman?
Sure. Thank you. Start with the West Orange Chamber. The West Orange Chamber will be hosting its annual Chamber Breakfast at the Wilshire Grand Hotel on Pleasant Valley Way this year on February 3rd, Wednesday, February 3rd, 8:00 a.m. to 9:30. The Chamber welcomes their new membership, new members to the Board, and gives a platform for the mayor to present the State of the Town address, which highlights all of the community organizations, individual contributions, and local organizations in the township and our outstanding students. That's on February 3rd. Tickets are $35. You can purchase them online at www.westorangechamber.com, but not until Friday. The website is undergoing changes because we do have a new executive director. Brittany Charles has taken over for Mickey Wagner as the director for the Chamber. Tickets will be $35 online, and they will also be available in the mayor's office here at Town Hall. I just wanted to make sure everyone is aware of the West Orange Arts Council. Their gallery and gift shop has opened on Valley Road. Let me just get the address. They are offering, the address is 551 Valley Road. They are offering, besides unique gifts in their gift shop, there is a gallery, there is rentable space if you want to have an event. Membership includes, let me read what their membership includes, 10% discount at Jerry's Artist Outlet, vast array of programs up there also, 25% discount on the annual Classic Film Festival, which starts on Sunday, discounted workshops, which will be offered, enrollment at artist registry, and annual members exhibits. The Arts Council is also planning to recognize George Tarr, noted resident that passed away last year at 100 years old, and Bill Cofone on January, and Monsa Musa on January 23rd. I have to get more information on that. And the planning board. The planning board meets tomorrow night, and we are in the process of reviewing our rules and procedures. No pending applications to date.
Very good. Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilman Guarino?
Thank you, Council President. First of all, we're planning on getting together another community-wide meeting to give you an idea of the Rutgers students and Professor Charles Brown from Rutgers University Blaustein School of Government and Planning. They'll be coming to West Orange hopefully in January, towards the end of January, to make a public presentation of their new complete streets and incorporating all the traffic and pedestrian safety information that will need be to make West Orange the street smart capital of the world. So, just keep on a lookout for that. We haven't finalized a date yet. We're trying to get the students up here because the students are very excited to come and show what they've done and what they've put together, and so we'll let the community know. And it will be in a facility that will be able to fit as many people as possible. The West Orange Downtown Alliance, of course, we're having our initiatives meeting this Thursday. The invitations were sent out, and we want the community's input to the initiatives and things that we need to do in the downtown corridor. So, we'd like to see as many people as there as possible. It's this Thursday. It's at 6:00 p.m. at Pre Links on Main Street. Pre Links on Main Street is right next to the entrance of Llewellyn Park. So, the invitations were sent out, right, Executive Director?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. And that's about it. So, thank you very much, Council President.
Councilman, if a member of the public did not attend the first session, are they invited to come into the second session, or is it something that, or is it like a set group?
For the?
For the downtown restaurant.
No, it's open to the general, right? Ms. Brault?
After Thursday night, we're going to have breakout sessions, which then you can pick a category and then join us after that. This is the last big meeting. It's only about 22:00 p.m. at eight.
Okay. So if you're there for the first time, I'm sorry, yeah, you can get there if it's your first time.
Exactly.
Even though it's the second meeting.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Sorry. May I?
Yeah.
Please, sorry. Council President, sorry for interrupting.
No, I'm done. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Only because, you know, the downtown corridor and the gateway to the downtown corridor is St. Mark's Church and the unfortunate tragedy on New Year's Day. So, I just wanted to make sure, Council President, that we can have an update from the administration on St. Mark's.
Yeah, we'll have that before the public comment period, so that if there are any members of the public that are coming later, they can hear from Mr. Sayers at that point. Councilman Kukovia?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Just very briefly, Councilwoman McCartney mentioned this devastating fire that hit St. Mark's Church early on New Year's Day. It pretty much burned everything wood in the property. There were six or seven different fire companies that responded to try to put out the fire. It's been a landmark in the town for nearly 200 years and is an irreplaceable example of architecture and the history of architecture in the country. And I just wanted to say that the West Orange Historic Preservation Commission, I spoke with the chair, and he is going to be very involved, he and the commission are going to be very involved in what happens from here in terms of where the property goes. And there's a couple of distinguished members of the Historic Preservation Commission here who I expect to be speaking much more knowledgeably than I can, but I just want everyone to know this is just devastating from an architectural perspective as well as the role of that property as a landmark in the town for, like I said, nearly 200 years. I think the original property was constructed in 1822, and it's just very sad. Just wanted to note that.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah. Also, thank goodness too with that loss and the tragedy that no one was hurt in the fire because, as bad as it was, so thank God no one was hurt. The Public Relations Commission will be meeting next week, next Thursday evening here in council chambers. We're going to start planning the Realtor Open House that we'll be having at the end of February, and more details will come at the next meeting after we have a planning session, so we look forward to that. I had the opportunity to stop by for a little bit last week. I just want to congratulate Patty Duffy and her committee for hosting a lovely senior citizens' holiday luncheon at the manor last Tuesday. It was a beautiful party. Many of our residents were in attendance, so thank you to her and her committee for all their hard work for that event. And also, I believe coming up on the 18th, the Human Relations Commission is celebrating Martin Luther King Day at the West Orange High School. I believe that event is at 9:30 a.m. at West Orange High School it begins. Thank you.
Turn of council.
What's the date again, Councilwoman?
I believe it's Monday, the 18th?
Yes.
Monday, the 18th.
9:30 to noon.
9:30 to noon.
Yes.
There are some awards being extended to members of our community that exemplify the values and the initiatives that Dr. Martin Luther King inspired. We mentioned St. Mark's Church, and I do want to say that, you know, it is a sad tragedy and it's an issue that's going to come up later, I guess. We have members of the public interested in discussing the issue. But I do want to commend, or I want to thank, our historic, what's the actual title?
Preservation Commission?
No, not the commission.
Historian.
Town historian Joe Fagan. If you go to YouTube and you do a search for "A Tribute to a Friend," a tribute to a friend on YouTube.
It's for the funeral.
A funeral for a friend. A funeral for a friend on YouTube, you'll find a wonderful piece of art video that our town historian Joe put together, which chronicles the history and the historical significance of that property and that building, and also, you know, talks about the actual events that took place in that day. So, I invite members of the public to take a look at that and learn a little bit more about why it means so much to us. So, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
I do want to acknowledge in the public, we have Deputy Mayor Rodolfo Rodriguez. There is a Hispanic Foundation meeting this Friday at 7:00, 7:00 p.m., and Amalia Marcella, teacher of our school system, and also a secretary of the foundation. The meeting's at 7:00 on Friday. Members of the public that want to attend, it's at, what's the exact address?
315?
315 Main Street. At 315 Main Street. We have our library director in attendance, and one of our freeholders will also be in attendance. So, any member of the public that wishes to attend this month's meeting, 7:00 on Friday. In regards to liaison reports, we had a meeting in December of the Eagle Rock Home Board, and we, you know, we were just socializing. We didn't really get a chance to talk much about business, but we'll have a meeting in the next few weeks, and I'll have more to report on that. So, with that said, is there anything else, colleagues, that we wish to talk about before we close? We have five minutes. We'll break for five minutes, and then we'll begin our regular meeting at 7:00.
Council President?
Yes, Council.
This might be a time, and I would defer to your judgment, wanted to get an update on where redevelopment stands. There was an important ruling from the New Jersey Supreme Court just recently, and I just asked the administration to be available just to explain.
Sure.
What's been going on with downtown redevelopment and also the potential impact of that ruling.
Sure.
That may be a good time.
Mr. Sayers?
Yeah, sure. I guess as everyone knows, the case that went before the Supreme Court was settled, and the Supreme Court ruled in favor of the township, which allows us to move ahead with doing what we had planned on doing with bonding for part of the redevelopment project and some of the infrastructure needs that were needed there. Again, I don't want to speak much about that because it still could be subject to appeal, but that's basically what I can tell you as of now. I haven't seen much going on with any construction. We did have a conversation about, middle of the week, last week, about the construction loan. There's a little issue regarding a piece of property that is a right-of-way that the county owns down by redevelopment, and the LLC is working out with the county on how to resolve that issue so that they can move ahead with getting their construction loan. Basically, other than that, that's really all I have to report. I haven't seen much of any construction going on at all.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And just for the public's benefit, it was a case that was filed challenging the financial or the issuance of those redevelopment, the redevelopment bonds, and whether or not we had to get approval by the Department of Community Affairs, and also whether a referendum was necessary.
There were two issues. We had originally had the bond approved by the local finance board, and part of the issue was that when we reduced the bond, one of the issues was, did we have to go back before the board to be re-approved?
Okay.
And then the second part, another part of the issue had to do with whether it had to be put out for referendum or not.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Ms. Sayers?
If I could, Council President, just wanted to follow up. If I understand you correctly, you're saying that you've been told that by the redeveloper, one of the redeveloper partners, that the construction loan, the $70 million construction loan, is imminent except for one small part of the?
I didn't speak to them directly. It went through our redevelopment council, and basically they were having an issue with a piece of property, like a 12 by 18-foot piece of property that's a right-of-way when the county had paved Main Street, and it just has to be deeded over to them, and supposedly that's going to happen next week at the freehold meeting.
It would be really difficult to ascertain that. I guess what you're asking is whether or not that's the sole issue holding up the construction loan?
Well, I just remember Mr. Diaz came before the council, I believe, back in, was it September?
August?
Yes, August.
August. And said that he expected to have the construction loan approved within two months.
Right.
And so, it's been well past the two months, so I was just trying to figure out whether...
I believe that this issue came up when they went for the title, they went to the title company. Once you get a loan, you have to go to the title company. The title company had figured out that there's this small piece of property, I think it's like 12 by 18 feet, if I'm not mistaken, and it's a right-of-way that the county owns and has to be deeded over to them before they'll approve the construction loan.
Which means that they pull title, their title work, they're pretty far along in the process, which is a good indicator.
Yeah. So, supposedly, last I heard, I didn't check today though, last I heard it was going before the freeholder board next week sometime.
Oh, wow. Okay.
To approve the quitclaim deed.
All right. If there's anything that we can do to assist the process.
See how it plays out. We're staying on top of them.
Or make ourselves available.
And please, keep the council.
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you.
A motion. Okay. All right.
From December 15th.
Pardon that.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah. Sure. Okay, at this point, is it 7:00 yet, Madam Clerk? 7:00?
Yes.
7:00?
No break.
Thank you, Ms. Sayers, for that clarification. What we're going to do is, we are entertaining a motion to come back and finish the meeting of December 15th. It's been that long. Wow, December 15th.
Can I get a motion?
I make a motion.
My second.
To reconvene.
Hold on, favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion is carried.
So, we are going back in time to December 15th. We're continuing a recess meeting of that date. There are some additional resolutions that we will be entertaining. Madam Clerk?
We have Resolution 293-15, a resolution authorizing the chief financial officer to cancel the 2015 current fund budget and other appropriations at year end. Are any resolutions being pulled this evening from the three that are on the agenda?
There's two cancellations and a budget transfer.
Right.
Perhaps, Council President, Mr. Gross could just explain in 30 seconds or less why we're doing this? I think it's good news for the township and taxpayers, so...
Absolutely. Mr. Gross?
30 seconds or less.
Yes. The cancellation resolutions are to free up funds for utilization in surplus, which we can then use in next year's budget to help with minimizing whatever the taxes to be collected in 2016. The transfer is basically housekeeping, sort of once a year timed, where we have the opportunity to make adjustments based on our actual purchases as opposed to our projected purchases.
Any additional questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve a consent agenda.
Still moved?
Second?
Excuse me.
Did someone give a second?
My second.
We had two seconds, so we have a third possibly.
I'm going to pick Jerry.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Cirillo?
Yes. Okay, so that concludes the December 15th meeting. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need a motion, or just?
I'll second.
Okay.
All right, so fix it to the first. Michelle, hold on, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion carried.
That adjourns the meeting. So, now, we are back, Tuesday, January 5th, 2016. Welcome to the public meeting. We want to wish everyone a happy, healthy, prosperous 2016 from the bottom of our hearts for my colleagues. Again, Councilwoman, good to see you back.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was emailed to the Star Ledger and West Orange Chronicle on October 14th, 2015. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the municipal clerk of the township of West Orange on October 14th, 2015. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kukovia?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Cirillo?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in the public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to begin today's meeting with an update, a synopsis, a briefing from our business administrator, Mr. Sayers, on the unfortunate fire of the St. Mark's property. Mr. Sayers?
Thank you, Council President. Just to give you an update, first of all, you know, I'd like to commend all the people in the township who fired police and everybody who responded to this event. Unfortunately, it was a very tragic event. I got a call at 6:00 a.m. on New Year's morning telling me what was going on, and they did, I think they did an admirable job of keeping it under control. Unfortunately, they couldn't do enough to save a lot of the building. And I'd like to also commend some of our neighboring towns who came and helped us, six or seven different towns came in to help us fight this battle. And thank God no one was hurt, and, you know, no one died in the fire. So, that's first and foremost. Second of all, we had some engineers out on the, we had a structural engineer out on the job with, along with Mr. Lepore the day of the fire, and one of the concerns was the steeple, on whether that steeple was going to be able to stand alone or be taken down because obviously if you look at it, it's high, it's so high that if, God forbid, that thing ever fell, it would have been all over Main Street and everywhere else. Early on that morning, they had decided, once the fire was getting pretty much under control, that the steeple was sturdy enough to stay there. Throughout the rest of the day, the fire got put out, and they did some evaluations. And yesterday, we met with the owners of the church, pastor and his son, and we had discussed with them what, from a municipal government standpoint, we had to do. We issued them an unsafe structure notice yesterday morning, explained to them that they had to bring in some people to take a look at the building and get it to the point where they could stabilize it. There's some gables that are cracked from my... with them what, from a municipal government standpoint, we had to do. We issued them an unsafe structure notice yesterday morning, explained to them that they had to bring in some people to take a look at the building and get it to the point where they could stabilize it. There's some gables that are cracked from my, what my understanding is from Mr. Tracy. He and I had a meeting yesterday morning, and they're afraid of some of the walls coming down because of those gables being cracked. And there's also a problem with, Tom explained to me that there's an issue with underneath the floor, there's a crawl space, and the fire got in underneath there, and the floor was starting to sink. So they were afraid that if the floor sank and cracked, then the walls come down, we have another problem. Make a long story short, we gave them the unsafe structure notice. Tom explained all these things to them yesterday. And they have until, I'm not sure if it's the 17th or the 19th, to basically stabilize everything within the building. And we gave them also a timeframe to basically have their own structural engineers come in, and architects, and look at the building, and get back to us and tell us what they're going to do with the building. Whether it's going to be refurbished, whether it's got to be demolished, or whatever. So we kind of gave them some, some opportunities to do what they need to get done, and hopefully they're going to get them done within those timeframes. If they're not done within those timeframes, we obviously, as a municipality, are going to have to take some action with that. But it seemed as though they were pretty much in tune with trying to get things done. They were meeting with their insurance people supposedly today, and I was expecting a call from them today, but I didn't get, I did not get a call by the time the meeting started. So, that's kind of like where we're at. I had a conversation with Brian Feeney from the Historic Preservation Commission about what we had to do and where we were going. I told him I was going to keep him in the loop and, you know, what was going on and where we were at. But as of today, I have gotten no other information from them after they met with their insurance company. So we're just waiting to hear from them. And that's basically where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Sayers. It's, since it's a private property, you know, we're pretty limited on what, you know, except for our ordinances, making sure that they're being followed on what we can, we can ask of the property owners.
Well, they own the property.
Right.
We, we, we had a very good discussion with them yesterday, myself, Tom Tracy, and the owners of the property. And he actually had his son with him, and he was taking notes, so he kind of understood what, what had to be done. And hopefully, they're going to get it done within the timeframes that we have set up.
Get it done. So, so that was my question. I mean, what's the vision? What's the short, long-term vision for the property?
They got to stabilize the building by either the 17th or the 19th.
Right. You mentioned the 17th.
I'm not sure what they, what that was. I don't have the notice in front of me. And then we gave them till, till February to be able, once they got the building stabilized, to bring in architects and engineers, whatever they wanted to do, and get back to us and tell us exactly what they were going to do with the building and how, how they were going to move forward. So that's the timeframe we're under right now.
Okay. All right. I'm glad to hear that, that there's a plan to refurbish what was once there.
We laid it out to them, and obviously, it's up to them to implement it.
Do they realize the historic value of the property?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
And are they, are there intentions to restore it?
Their intention, they want to restore the building.
Okay, good.
Whether they can do that, or afford to do that, or whether the, one of the big issues is, from my understanding, is, is if the insurance company comes in, it's going to, that's going to play a major role in how they're going to-
Sure.
-move ahead with what they got to do. But obviously, that's a decision they're going to have to make. And we're going to do as much as we can to get them to hopefully refurbish the building.
Have they been in touch with the, with Mr. Feeney and the Historic Preservation Group to, are they aware of any grants, or?
As far as I, as far as I know, Brian was out there.
Okay.
The day of the fire, when I spoke to him. And the issue with grants is, is we don't own the building. So if there are grants out there, they would have to-
Oh, no, no, for them. Do they not like to push them in the direction for the, or?
The big issue, one of the discussions we had yesterday was even with grants, I mean, you might get a $100,000 grant, there's, there's a lot of money that's going to have to go back into that building. And I think it's going to come down to-
Insurance.
To, to money.
Yeah.
You know, unfortunately. That's a very old building, as, as Council, Councilman Krokoviac said, it was built in the early 1800s. And to refurbish that building, you're looking at a lot of money.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman.
Okay. Ms. Sayers, were there any outstanding issues or violations or construction holes on the building during the time?
What had happened was, that, that, that story kind of got a little mixed up. We issued a statement actually to the press yesterday, or the, or Friday, I'm not sure when it was. Susan still here?
Yes.
Yesterday. And basically explained that. What happened was, back in September, we had gotten a call, actually, I didn't, I think the mayor got a call from someone, I believe, from the Historic Preservation Commission, who basically said that they were taking windows out of the building, and they didn't think they had a permit. So we sent Mr. Tracy over there, and unfortunately, that's what happened. They had taken some windows out of the building, and they were putting in an HVA system when they first purchased the building. And they didn't have permits for the HVA system. There wasn't a stop-work order issued. What happened was, Mr. Tracy had issued a violation notice to them, and told them they had to bring some people in because he didn't feel that the HVA system was, was up to code. They brought their own people in to look at the HVA system, and basically, they had to make some changes. To date, those changes have not been made on that system. However, they were fined for that. I think it was $2,000, the, the fine was issued. The second issue was the gas piping for the furnaces, which I think they started around beginning of December, and midway through December, Mr. Tracy and his staff went in there, checked them. Everything was fine. Actually, they passed inspection. So, there was nothing outstanding with regard to that. The only thing that still was outstanding as of the day of fire was the HVA system had to be redone. I'm not sure exactly what had to be done to it.
Okay.
But some things had to be redone that weren't, that weren't-
Because there's so many stories out there, that's why I want to make sure there's a clarification of what's going on.
Yeah, there was, that, it was, it was back in September when we issued that. There was no stop-work order. All it was, was when we went in there and we were notified by, I believe the mayor was notified by the, someone from the Historic Preservation Commission, I'm not sure who it was, and he called me, and then I sent Mr. Tracy out there. And that's where we, everything started.
Thank you, Ms. Sayers.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Before that, before, during our conference agenda, I spoke about a YouTube video that our town historian put together. It has 3,000-plus hits, and it's very educational. Members of our community that want to learn about the history of this landmark, go to YouTube and do a search for "Funeral for a Friend" by Joseph Fagan, our town historian. And you learn a little bit about the significance and why this is really important to us, and why our administration's being proactive in making sure that we do what we can to try to salvage that landmark. Thank you, Ms. Sayers. We are going to move on to public comment. Any members of the public wish to address the council? First hand over here. Name an address, please.
My name is Jerry Garland, 296 Marionale Drive, West Orange, New Jersey. I'm glad to see Mr. Guarino back.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the comments made by members of the group concerning the role of the West Orange Historic Preservation Commission. And I am here as its representative. And following me, I ask you to recognize Mr. Feitlowitz, who is the vice chair of the commission. I have brief remarks, which I will read, because I want to make sure that what I say gets said properly. The issue of whether the West Orange Historic Preservation Commission's involvement, review, participation, advice, and/or anything related to St. Mark's Church and its landmark designations, local, state, and national, are neither options nor choices. The commission's role in these matters, as stated in the West Orange Ordinance, Chapter 25-30, provides for such participation by the township of West Orange, and it is the expectation of the commission that such participation will be freely and completely provided. The issues concerning the future of St. Mark's after the terrible fire of January 1st, 2016 is filled with a lot of variables, most of which rest with the responsibilities of the owners of the church. There are, however, responsibilities for the township, including the West Orange Historic Preservation Commission, but not necessarily limited to its Department of Planning, the West Orange Building Department, the West Orange Fire Department, the Office of the Mayor, the Township Council, the Planning Board, and any other township office that is in any way related to the future status of St. Mark's. The owners of the church have the first and immediate responsibility to determine the structural integrity of the remaining structural elements, to select architects and engineers to study the feasibility of various proposals for the future of the building. Excuse me. To ascertain the financial availability of funds, whether the sources of same are insurance, grants, private and public donations. However, these responsibilities do not occur in a vacuum. And depending on the nature of these responsibilities, and whether they individually or collectively have any effect on the current landmark status of this property, requires discussion, advice, collaboration with and to the West Orange Historic Preservation Commission. The commission therefore looks forward to its full participation in all and every issue that in any way, that in any way concerns St. Mark's and its future. Thank you very much. And a copy of my remarks, I don't have copies for everybody, but for the chairperson, for him to distribute. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Marty's coming up?
Marty?
Yeah. I think we should stay on topic.
Hi, Marty, you're next.
I'm not as organized as my esteemed colleague. I, I didn't get to type it up.
It's about the heart. Speak from your heart.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm very sad. I, I do feel, as our historian Joe Fagan said, I feel as if I've lost a friend.
Marty, name an address.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, please.
I've been here before, so I thought you might remember.
First.
Marty Feitlowitz.
It's just for the record.
17 Bradford Avenue. And I am the vice chairman, former chairman of the HPC. Only last week, I was deeply concerned about the missing stained glass windows. Now, this week, I'm totally devastated by the loss of the entire church. It's almost ironic that the building that used to sit next door to the church, the Condit House, is also gone. I see some people are looking at me like, what are you talking about? Once it's gone, it's gone. It's erased from memory. Joe could probably correct me on this, but if I'm not mistaken, the Condit House was the oldest residential building in Essex County.
Last federal building standing in Essex County.
Close.
Federal period, I'm sorry.
Thank you. It was demolished, and its demolition gave way to the founding of the West Orange Historic Preservation Commission. I took an oath, in effect, to never let that happen again. The beautiful interior woodwork and the ceiling vaulting may be gone, but the masonry still remains. The masonry shell still remains. The property is still a historic site, and as such, anything, anything done on this site will require HPC approval. This means no demolition or other construction work can occur without first bringing it before the HPC. I urge the council and all the township departments to be excessively diligent as the process of going forward evolves. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on this topic? Yes. The gentleman on, yes, on the left.
Good evening. My name is Mark Allen Hewitt. I'm FAIA. I'm a member of the New Jersey AIA. I'm a faculty member at Rutgers University. I'm an architectural historian. I've written several books on American architecture. And I'm here at the request of my friend Jerry Eben, who could not be here tonight. He had another commitment. He asked me to come just to say a few brief words about the architectural community's concerns about St. Mark's Church. We've heard some eloquent comments from your Historic Preservation Commission, and, and they are, of course, rightly concerned about the, about the fabric of the church. I urge the township and the Historic Preservation Commission to get qualified architects involved in doing an assessment of the masonry structure of the building. But I also urge, and Jerry wanted to underline this, urge it upon the public to understand that in the winter with fire, stone walls are very, very fragile because water from the fire equipment will go into those sandstone walls. Sandstone is an extremely porous material. It spalls quite easily. It's not the best building stone, but it is a magnificent building stone used in lots and lots of New Jersey buildings. House of Prayer in Newark is made of sandstone as well. So, I, I urge the township and anyone who's concerned with the safety of the building to make sure that any unbraced walls in the building are shored as quickly as possible because spall, water can get into the walls, and as someone suggested, any crack that is filled with water can turn into ice. Those walls can go down very, very easily. So, the building, although masonry is not a fragile material, in the wintertime, masonry is extremely fragile and extremely prone to this kind of deterioration. Sandstone even more so. So, and, and so the structural, I think that it's imperative that you have structural engineers who understand historic buildings and historic masonry, and the AIA could be of assistance to you in finding those kinds of people. Secondly, the AIA, I think, is, is, of course, concerned about the future of the church. This is a building that Phoebe Stanton called "The Beginning and the End of the Gothic Revival in the United States." It is that important. It is not a building like any other church anywhere in, of a Gothic style in, in the United States. It was started in the 1820s, prior to the arrival of Richard Upjohn, the founder of the American Institute of Architects, was the architect of a, of a second phase of construction, probably 1850, 1860s, on the church. It was he who designed some of the most magnificent church woodwork I have ever seen. I visited the church about 10 years ago, when it was still owned by the Archdiocese of Newark. I was concerned at that point enough that I called the archdiocese and talked to them about the future of the church. I did not get any, any sort of positive responses about that, but I was happy that they sold the church. But that woodwork is, was some of the best ecclesiological design woodwork of any church I know of in the United States. It is by no means certain that any of that woodwork can be restored if there was no documentation of the woodwork. So I, I, I think part of the tragedy of this is that should, even should the public wish to put much of the interior back in a restored condition unless there were superb photographs taken of all that woodwork or some kind of- taken of all that woodwork or some kind of documentation, it's unlikely that it can be, it can be fully restored. That doesn't mean that the church can't have a second life. I should remind you perhaps that, that Shartra Cathedral, the most beautiful Gothic cathedral I know of in the world, was built as a result of a devastating fire that destroyed the previous cathedral, and a relic of that, of that building was preserved, and the public went out and found the money to build Shartra Cathedral. So I don't think there's any, anything stopping the public from rebuilding a church, a beautiful church there again. But I do urge caution. The AIA will, will of course be, be watchful, just as the, just as the Historic Preservation Commission will be. The Historic Preservation Community in New Jersey will be watchful and also will lend as much support as you need. I can assure you that if you need loans, you might apply directly to the New Jersey Historic Trust for a stabilization loan, if, if, if the, if the church is willing to do that. So there are resources that are available to, to you to help you deal with this enormous loss and this enormous tragedy. And I, my heart goes out to every member of this community about this loss. It's just, it's, it's, it's a blow that I know you all feel, and I'm, I'm very, very sorry that you've all had to, to endure it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. And yeah, that was very informational. I'm sure the administration's taking notes, and some of my colleagues that have already been proactive in trying to secure resources that may be out there. We're fortunate to have Jerry Eben. We all heard from him, I'm sure, during the holidays about this issue, and, and he expressed his passion. Thank you again.
Good evening. Justin Mahalik, 31 Park Lane, Essex Fells. I am the current president of AIA New Jersey and had a, a comment that we wanted to make from the organization. "The New Jersey chapter of the American Institute of Architects is saddened by the tragic fire that ravaged St. Mark's Church in West Orange on New Year's Day. The church is, as was stated, a national treasure of incalculable historic significance. We implore all those involved, the building's current owners, the town council, and our municipal, state, and national officials, and representatives, to do everything in their power to ensure that this tragedy is not compounded and that the remaining portions of the building are saved. I was a resident of West Orange for five years before moving to Essex Fells in 2002, and it was truly an amazing experience to have spent those five years in historic Llewellyn Park. Like Llewellyn Park, the St. Mark's Church is not only part of West Orange, but a significant part of its history. A treasure once lost is lost forever. We cannot allow what remains of this treasure to be lost." And to my colleague Mark Hewitt, as he stated, AI New Jersey is offering up any help to the council, to our resources, to our experts, such as Mark, and we have several others in the historic preservation area, and we will help in any way possible. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. Mr. Rodriguez, you had your hands up before we move on to the next topic. Or does somebody else speak on this issue?
Good evening. Eli Goldstein, 570 Overhill Road, South Orange. An architect, managing partner of the Goldstein Partnership. I grew up in West Orange, went to West Orange High School. When I first got out of architecture school, one of my first projects was working with my father on the design of the police building next door to this building. And I just wanted to, for those who may not be aware of it, when we were working on that building, studying the entire downtown area, the focus of all of our efforts, the models we built, the drawings we did, to provide context, the focus was always St. Mark's, as appropriately, as the major building in the downtown. And so I just wanted to echo the sentiments that have already been expressed by my colleagues here and say that all the resources of the AIA and the members in New Jersey are there to help you as much as we can in light of this disaster. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Anyone else on this topic?
I am Megan Brill, 1 Ocre Road, and I'm also the executive director for Downtown Alliance. I guess yesterday, I was off the grid this weekend on vacation, so I missed the actual watching of St. Mark's be destroyed before our eyes, and I fielded a lot of phone calls on Monday with a lot of people asking lots of questions about how could this happen, and what did the church do, and what did the township do, and, you know, lots of animosity, and people are hurt, but they're looking to point fingers. And I would like to just point out two things, that we are West Orange, and all day long I was just, you know, hanging up phone, being mad at people for being mad about the situation and not really looking for a solution. And then at 5:00, I get an email from Dave Drill, who is our second biggest property owner behind Prism Downtown. And Dave sent me a note, quick note, that said, "Meg, can you get me the name of that pastor? My dad wants to offer 80 Main Streets so that they can worship in our building next, you know, close to them." And I thought, there's West Orange, that's what I've been waiting for. That was like, and it was a good way to end, you know, a really crappy Monday. So I want to point out two things. We get that this is a national historic site, and that we should do everything possible to make sure that it's preserved, what's left. But then we also have to remember that this church is new to our community. They don't know us, you know, and all they've really seen is, you know, lots of people yelling about windows and, you know, that we lost this church. So I encourage us all to reach out to the pastor. The information is out there. I have the chaplains. I know Sue McCartney talked to them. I spoke with them as well. They're going to need some handholding and encouragement. They are truly as devastated as we are. They were excited about being part of our downtown. They were excited to be in West Orange, and they don't know what the future holds for them. So I just would like to, you know, remind everybody about those two things.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Mr. Rodriguez, you had your hand, hands up before?
There's something else on this table.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good evening. Thank you. Basically, our town council president said a few things that we, we're here for. We represent the Hispanic Foundation, Amalia, and myself, Rodriguez. I'm on 22 Ashuteros. I didn't say my address. First of all, I want to thank the council for coming and being with us on the toys giveaway in December. It was very nice. Actually, we even had toys left, and that was so great. It was really great. We donated the toys left to a Haitian foundation to be sent to Asia, to Haiti, to poor kids in Haiti. So that was good. We also, actually, I, now we, I want to thank everyone for the support on the passing of my father, for coming, all of you, Mayor Parisi, and everybody else. Thank you for the support. Thirdly, this coming Friday, we have a regular meeting at 7:00, 315 Main Street. We have been bringing guest speakers, and this time, we have the director of the library, Dave, who's going to be talking about ESL. And we also have somebody else. He's a freeholder, Bobadilla, he's going to be there, because we're trying to make like some Spanish-speaking guests with someone, because translating all the time is kind of uncomfortable. It's like, a lot of people don't speak English, believe it or not. I mean, a lot of them do, but a lot of them don't. But so far, the foundation is moving on, and we're very proud of what we have accomplished. And we want to thank everyone for the support. Thank you.
Amalia, any, anything?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Deputy Mayor, if, just a suggestion, I believe the congregation at St. Mark's may have been a Latino congregation, or maybe a Latino congregation. Perhaps you can get in touch with the congregation and we can, you can help serve as, as a bridge so that we, so that our community can express the, you know, the sentiments that we feel for the landmark, and we can proactively make sure that, you know, the, the vision of our town for that property is expressed, and we can share the value with them.
Yeah.
So, yeah. I would appreciate that. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I believe we have members of the public here that want to speak about the TNR program. Can, can you raise your hands? I want to see how many we have. Okay, let's, let's go on to that topic. Yeah, you, you guys can go first.
Together?
Yeah, you together or separate?
I have specific comments.
Okay. Okay. Who let the lady up? Sally, thank you.
Sally Malanga, 57 Ridge Road. I'm here to express my gratitude for the collaborative work on behalf of the council and our town's attorney, Ken Kazer, and, and the, all on behalf of the volunteers and support of these wonderful volunteers that are trying to do this humane work for cats. So I confess, I'm a cat lover, America's most favorite pet, and I, I want to thank you for proposing this ordinance and working on it. And then also I want to say how much I admire this group of volunteers and Judy Steyer, who has kicked off the, the group. They are very professional, they are reliable, and they're humane, and they really do a wonderful service for our town. And I'm sure that they're going to fill us in on some of the statistics that they have as far as their successes so far. So I think we have a lot to be proud of with this proposal and this, this hopefully new ordinance. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malanga.
Good evening, members of the council. Kevin Malanga, Ridge Road. Mr. Garverino, great to see you back in the saddle.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I would like to echo my wife's sentiments about the gratitude that we feel, the cooperation that we've received from the council, the efforts that Mr. Garverino made in pushing this forward, the effort that Mr. Kazer has made in getting the ordinance into close to final form. We're, we're very grateful. It's one of those things that makes you feel good that the council can work together with the volunteers in West Orange and make something very positive happen. And we also, I'd like to thank Ms. DeNovo, the health officer, for her assistance and cooperation in, in being open to the possibility of a TNR program. So, you know, we welcome that. I do have a few specific comments, if I make, make specific comments and observations. Mr. Kazer and I have spoken about the, the issue, and we've had discussions about the difficulty it is of satisfying everyone in an ordinance. Generally, the, the ordinance looks 99% great. You know, we're, we are grateful that it's not going to be a, a difficult process to get this ordinance passed. If we look at the first page of the ordinance, the definition of animal welfare organization, I'm concerned about the definition including a grant of 501(c)(3) status. It seems that this status is really not relevant to whether or not an organization can act as a sponsor for a TNR program. If we envision more than one sponsor, and that's likely because we live in a very large community, it would be better if individuals could also act as sponsors. So in that situation, a 501(c)(3) status would be completely unnecessary and impossible to be obtained for an, an individual. Also, I have concern on page three, the management of feral cat colonies in section 10-15.2a, that no feral cat colony feeding site may be located within 200 feet of a school or child daycare center. I think that, I understand the concern about not exposing children to a potentially aggressive cat, but I think that this definition should be qualified so that it expresses that concern, so that no cat colony may be within 200 feet of a school if there's a potential danger, a demonstrable danger to the children. If we know that there are aggressive cats there, then granted, we would have to relocate that colony in its entirety. But if there is no apparent danger, if it's not demonstrable, I think that we should be able to pre, have, having colonies within 200 feet of a school. And it's continuing on that same page. I think that definition C, I, that no feeding site shall be located on any public property without the written permission of the appropriate officials. I, I think this leads to a question of who has responsibility for a particular site? If we have a parking lot, for example, behind this building, who has responsibility for authorizing the feeding of a cat colony that's in the parking lot? We understand that there have been cat colonies in this area, behind the bakery, for example, and they, they've been addressed, but is it on the bakery property? Is it on the parking lot of the township? So I think that's prohibiting, having a blank prohibition, and then the consent of various officials for the feeding of the cats in those locations. I think that complicates the matter. I think that we should be permitted to have cat colonies on public land, provided that there's no danger to the public. I think that would simplify matters extensively. Moving to page four, section 10-15.5, caretaker requirements. Paragraph E, that paragraph indicates that food may be left out for no more than two hours. I think that's going to complicate matters for a caretaker who has a job. If that person puts out food at 7:00 in the morning, they go to work, they have no way of returning, in all likelihood, to remove any potential food that's left over. So I think to address a concern of vermin eating the food, raccoons eating the food, opossums eating the food, it would be much more simple to say food should not be left out overnight. This way, a caretaker can leave the food in the morning, come back at dusk. If there's any food left, they can remove it.
Your time is up. I would extend a little.
Yeah. Um, yeah, please.
I have, I have no more comments. That actually covers everything that I have to say. So thank you very much for your time and your courtesy.
Thank you, Mr. Malanga. These are very good comments. I appreciate that. Quick question for legal counsel. If this matter is approved on first reading and amendments are, are to, you know, we're interested in considering amendments, what is the legal process?
My, my hope, and Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, you have to advertise this when in order to...
It's already advertised.
It's already advertised.
It'll be in Thursday's paper.
So if, would, would we be, if we make amendments tonight, can we re-advertise it and still have it considered at the next meeting, or we have to go to February anyway?
It would be February.
Okay. So, really doesn't make any difference then. I would like to get the language resolved, if we can, so that this is done. We may still have to postpone adoption until the first meeting in February, if that's the case. So be it.
Good.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I know that Councilman McCartney also has some, some... I know that Councilwoman McCartney also has some amendments for us to consider, so perhaps it may still be a work in progress, but I do want to commend our health officer, Ms. DeNovo. Yeah, I was looking for, oh, there she is.
She should have been waiting on this.
Would you like to come up and say a few words and talk about your efforts? Thank you again for working with our community and the administration. I spoke to the mayor. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here. He's, he's on, he's on business, he's out of town on business, but he did tell me that he's 100% supportive of this initiative. We want to make sure that we get the language right. He thanks the members of the community that have come, that have given their time to this effort. Ms. DeNovo?
Teresa DeNovo, health officer for the township of West Orange. First, I want to thank Ken. I mean, it was a very, I think, difficult job trying to put all the information together and putting it in a format that made sense between the things that I was saying and the group was saying. So I think we have a pretty good document. To, just to give you my point of view on what Mr. Malanga said, I think it's important to leave public property public and not have colonies on public property. I know Ken put in without permission, but I don't think it's a good idea to have cat colonies on public property, whether it's a school or the municipal building, it's public property and the public is using them for different purposes. So I don't think that we should be permitting that. The other point with the 200 feet from a school, I think it's very important that we don't have cat colonies near a school or a daycare center. We had a situation where we had a cat colony at a daycare center, where parents were calling and saying, "My children are coming home with cat feces on their feet." So I mean, there has to be some restriction and common sense in that we don't have to wait for the emergency to happen or the problem to happen before we say they shouldn't be. I think there has to be some restrictions there, and those are two things that I think are important. I don't know, is 200 feet enough? I don't really know, but that's the guideline that we use, so that way we are trying to say that these cats, they're going to be roaming. Hopefully, they're going to stay on the property.
We have a cat like that in our neighborhood.
But I don't think they should be on school property, and I don't think that they should be near children, because we really don't know. The hope is that they're going to be vaccinated and they're going to be spayed and neutered, but do we know that's going to happen? I don't know. And rabies is real. It's a real problem and it's a real danger, and we know that cats can carry rabies, and they have. So I don't think that we should be promoting that. There was one other thing, just let me address. The food being outside all day. We looked at a lot of ordinances before we put this together, from other communities and standards, from different associations, and the one from Hillside was a big one. And it was that the food would only be out for a short period of time. So that way, they know the cats are coming to feed, and we're not feeding everything else. So, the two hours was really supposed to be like an hour in the morning, an hour in the evening, and that's when the cats would come and feed. So if you just leave it out there, you have no idea who's coming and feeding and who's not coming and feeding the cats. So that's why there was the restriction. I think there might have been a time in there, but it really is supposed to be in daylight hours. We don't want any food out there in the evening and the darkness, when we know that nocturnal animals are going to be out there, such as raccoon and skunk, and we certainly don't want to be feeding them. So those were the reasons behind those stipulations in the, in the proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Teresa. And I have to say that you're more at ease now in regards to addressing this policy issue. I remember the, you know, when this issue first came up, I saw how, you know, you were feeling a lot of pressure because the population was getting out of control and perhaps, you know, your initial attempt was a little bit controversial, but now I see a little bit more, you have more confidence in the way this is being addressed, and I'm happy to see that. It's, it's, it's a sign of how hard you've worked on this.
Well, it's yet to be seen. We'll see. It's a new program. Hopefully, it'll work. If we can have cats vaccinated and neutered, that's certainly a plus.
Ken, can I ask her some questions?
Sure, that's fine.
I don't know what's, we're allowed to do it now or later.
I do.
How you doing?
Hi.
Unfortunately, I wasn't here the last time you had discussed this. I'm new to the council, as you know. So I'm trying, I thank Mr. Kazer for giving me some time last night and picking your brain with this ordinance, because it's, you know, trying to get up to speed on the issue. My first question for you, has anyone contacted the school district, talked to Mr. Retske, or any members at the school board in regards to the 200 feet?
No, I have not. I have not.
Because I think he should be included in the conversation if there's an ordinance affecting the school district. I'm sorry, I have to wear that old school board member hat. And when things get passed, and the school's always the last to know, so I'd appreciate a conversation there, especially because last year, there was an issue with foxes over by Pleasantdale School.
Yes.
So, and it was a big concern, and the school district incurred the cost of the issue. So I think they should be, there should be a conversation with the school, with Mr. Retske. Also, in regards to other ordinances that you reviewed, did you happen to look at the Bloomfield ordinance at all?
I did not look at Bloomfield.
Okay, because they have a stipulation there in regards to notifying the neighbors?
Mm-hmm.
And so I don't know if that was something that you've discussed in the past, or if that's something that can maybe be discussed.
It's on the...
Okay. As, I tried to do some quick research. I understand up in Bergen County, they had this issue, and they've been trying these pilot programs, and some have been successful and some have not. Has there been any discussion with any of those kind of communities to see what kind of success they have, or...
I think that the program is fairly new everywhere, and I came to the council because I had a problem with people feeding cats indiscriminately, mainly. And that's why I asked for the feeding ban. And when that happened, the organizations and residents that are in favor of this TNR program came forward, and then we realized, you know, how many of them there were in the program that they wanted to promote, aside from the feeding ban. So, this is something that is going to be new, and we don't really know if it's going to work. You know, I talked to other health officers, and to be honest, most of them are not in favor of the program. But we don't have any, any statistics to say it works or it doesn't work. The state health department is neutral. They won't say either way, if they're in favor of it or they're not in favor of it. We know that cats can carry rabies. You know, we have those statistics, and it's a concern because the wild animals, such as raccoons and skunks and foxes that carry rabies, people don't normally come in contact with them. Cats come in contact with those animals, and then if they become infected with rabies, humans are more likely to come in contact with cats. So that's the issue.
Ms. DeNovo, just to answer the question, I believe the groups that have been involved have bring that experience in regards to looking at all the programs, Bergen County, you referenced, and other municipalities, they have brought that experience and knowledge to your attention, and you work with them to craft this proposal. So, that, I guess that's what I would say.
You know, so the communities are doing it. To say whether it works or not, it's going to take time to know. It's going to take time to know.
Council President?
The idea, the idea is to be humane to the cats, because, you know, and so that we're not euthanizing them, so that they're not a danger as far as spreading rabies, that they're spayed or neutered, so they're not reproducing, and that they're going to live their lives out in these colonies. So it's going to be a challenge. We're going to see what happens. If we have complaints from neighbors, that's going to have to be addressed.
Council President, if I can, if I can just, I spoke with Councilwoman Casalina last night, as she indicated, and she was not here when the last full presentation was made by a sponsor group. I don't remember exactly when that was. I want to say it was last spring or last winter. It's been some time. There was a very good, frankly, presentation made. There were people here from different towns, from different sponsor groups, who spoke about their experiences and spoke about some of the experiences that they became aware of in other towns. It's mixed. There are some towns that have very successful programs, some towns that have not so successful programs. I'm sure it runs the gamut. And we don't know how it's going to work here, frankly. And there's a lot of things we could talk about with respect to what may make the program successful or more successful, and we'll wait and see how all the discussion goes tonight. There's a lot of people here who have an interest and have more expertise in this stuff than I do.
Thank you, Mr. Kazer. Perhaps we'll, we'll hold off discussing the policy component for when the ordinance comes up.
Okay.
If it's okay. And we'll let the members of the public come up and express their positions and the points of views, because I'm sure they don't want to stay here all night.
No, no, I apologize, and I look forward to the comments.
No, no, please. No, it's okay. No, because you know what? Those conversations are going to take place eventually.
Okay.
So, tonight. But, you know, we want to make sure that if there's any member of the public wants to go home, we'll give them the best present. Mr. Kazer, it was March of last...
It was March.
March of last year.
Well, that's why I'm wondering if this should be tabled and, and, I mean...
Well, we're still in public comment.
It may have to be if we do make any amendments, so as...
If there's, as I indicated, if there's substantial language changes, then it's going to get not introduced tonight. We'll postpone it, introduce it at the next meeting, and it'll be up for adoption on the first meeting in February. That's, you know, it's not a great big deal. My thought was that if there are fairly minor language changes, then we could amend it tonight on motion and then re-advertise it, and as soon as it can be adopted, adopt it, so.
Okay.
Okay, so let's continue with, with our agenda. Thank you, Mr. DeNovo.
Well, Council President, I wanted to, I know if we are on the topic, though, I know that there are volunteers here. I want to have that discussion on how the actual program works. So I want to hear from the volunteers.
So there may be a member of the public that, that has that knowledge? Yeah, I see an eager hand there. Judy?
Judy Starr. She represents the ordinance.
Thank you, Teresa.
Yeah. I need to understand how it works.
I'm Judy Steer, 1026 Smith Manor Boulevard, president of the West Orange TNVR program. I got involved, it's over a year ago, September, I believe, when the feeding ban was put into effect. Cats are not considered wildlife and cannot be, it's illegal to consider them wildlife. So that's what started this whole thing, really. And I did have a very small colony where I lived. It was a large colony when we moved in. I'm down to two. To answer some of your questions, we have trapped 69 cats. They have been sterilized and returned. We have taken in 35 kittens. We only have five in foster right now, one who was very ill, got a clean bill of health, was spayed, neutered today. Two others that, I call it the rolling syndrome, because the actual medical term is too many letters. They will be adopted. There is a specific organization which works with these types of kittens, and there are people that really like them. There's nothing wrong with them, other than they're very wobbly. Okay? The other two are still being socialized. So we adopted 30 kittens. We have an extensive application, and they have a contract to sign. We do get permission from the homeowner before we go onto the property. We trap, we did six between yesterday and today. I think it's been very successful, considering our first four were black kittens that we literally picked up and came to my house, because we didn't have a trap. We didn't have anything. We now have approximately nine traps. I have many volunteers. I have foster people. What else do we have? We have accomplished, we have an EIN number, we are incorporated, we have a 501(c)(3). What else do we have? I think that's about it. Oh, we have bylaws, and we've had our first corporation meeting. Funds have, we've done well. I mean, it gets low sometimes, but somebody out there always seems to come through with a donation, and it keeps us going. Right now, we're moving along very nicely. My only concerns, as Mr. Malanga has said, is with the ordinance, is the public property. I don't know if you follow us at all. We had a call from, people from Supreme Bakery, and there's a pizza place there as well, where there was four kittens and a mother in a sewer. Couldn't leave them there, couldn't get anybody to help us. So that's when you call your husband, and the other girl called her husband, and they lifted the grate, and ironically, the mother and the four kittens were socialized, neutralized, and are in a good home right now. So, any questions?
I can answer.
I have a question. Thank you, Judy, for your work and your commitment and your passion. I guess my question is how the volunteers, the volunteers work, and do you know the people in the community that are feeding the cats? Because it just seems that if they are leaving food out, you're just perpetuating the feral cat issue, but if the people, if you're monitoring the people that are feeding the cats and the cats are coming, then those are the cats that can be treated. Is that...
Exactly. And we do, we do ask those that, they contact us, and I have a list. I have a very long list. They have never done anything in the past, first, some of them can't afford it. I delivered food and straw for a shelter today to a family. I had seven cats there. Well, they're not going to make, multiply anymore. They're going to live their lives, and then that colony eventually will be gone.
Do people know to notify you? I guess that's my question. Like, if you just hear...
Big time.
Right, because I hear someone's feeding cats.
I think after the article in the paper way back in June or July, it was...
From page, right.
It was overwhelming, the phone calls. People do not want these cats killed. They, they've established relationships with these cats. Some of them have names for them. Some of them even, the cats have become quite friendly with them. They know that that person's going to feed them at seven, eight, nine o'clock in the morning, and probably again, depending on their work schedule, in the evening. That's the schedule. When we're trapping, we ask them, "What time do you feed?" And that's when we go. You know, it's, it's working. I mean, 69 cats since May, June, and 35 kittens. So if you want to try and figure out how many cats and kittens we've saved from being born, but what I really have to have know, because I don't want any of my volunteers being stopped or questioned, what will happen to cats if you decide that we cannot go on public property and trap there? What is, what's going to happen to them? Is there another alternative, other than killing them, or...
I don't know that that's how I'm interpreting this. I'm interpreting it that if you do find a cat on a public property, just exactly what you did, you got them...
Exactly.
And treated them. I think, I guess I was thinking that it would be the actual cat colony to return them.
Right.
And that's what I was thinking of, you return them to the public space.
We do return. We do return the cats to...
Where you found them?
Where we trapped them. Yeah. People there are feeding them.
Even on public property?
Yeah. Yeah, businesses and stuff, they're, they're the ones that call us. I don't know they're there until somebody calls me. It's, you know, how do I know? I don't know if they're by a school, unless somebody calls.
See, that's, that was the point I was trying to make before. How do you know who's feeding cats?
Right. If they're by a school, where the 200 feet came from, I've yet to find out where that...
That's a standard with planning board applications and zoning board applications. Everyone has to be noticed in a 200-foot radius, so I think that's just a general...
Okay. That colony was moved, and I did agree to reduce that to 45 days from 60. Most towns do. I look back at a lot of ordinances. Most of them, it's a 60-day timeframe, but I'll, I'll work with the 40... Most of them, it's a 60-day timeframe, but I'll, I'll work with the 45 if need be. I haven't really ran into that issue yet. But what we do, it's over a period of time, let's say they are near a school or something, we get permission from a sympathetic person in the area and gradually start moving the food. And they will follow the food. And that's how we move them. To actually trap them again, or trap them and...
Relocate.
Relocate them somewhere, it's very difficult, but you can slowly move them, and they'll stay where the food source is.
Judy, are you staying here for the actual policy discussion, or...
If you like.
I don't know what our colleagues would like. I know it's very...
This is so out of the ordinary anyway, so I thought this was the discussion that we needed to have.
No, because we're still in public comment, and I just want to get through public comment, so we can get to the policy discussion.
I have more questions, so...
Yeah. If it's okay, respectfully. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Council President, I think it's fine to leave it to later, as long as we can continue to have the dialogue, because we've got...
No, because we're setting a precedent, okay? So, we're having this discussion now, we're going to have this next meeting, and it's just, we need some order.
Right, what I was going to say was there's no public comment on first reading. That's what I was going to say.
Well, that's why I was confused.
But we knew we had to have the discussion.
Yeah, this is on first reading right now, so if you do it, you do it now.
Right, right.
But we need this discussion in order to finalize the language, so...
Correct.
It doesn't matter when you do it. Look, this is a fairly short agenda, as far as I'm concerned. You can whip through it in a very short period of time. I think if there's anybody else who wants to speak from the public on other subject matter, if other people can stay until you have the discussion on the ordinance, which is not going to take very long, that's fine.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'll leave it up to my colleagues. I mean, do we want to have, you know, the discussion now? Because we won't be able to have members of the public come up later.
You can finish public comment and then go back to it. I don't know how many other people are here to speak about other things.
Yeah, so let's finish public comment, and we'll get through the agenda.
We have a patient person right over there.
Yes.
Not too patient.
Donald Dayborn, 76, Maple Everum. I was one of the, I think I was probably one of the first people involved on the other end of their organization in that, in the early spring, we had a situation with cats, and I have to say that they were outstanding in the way they dealt with us, with the cats, and they addressed all the issues involved in terms of how to deal with the cats, and it was done successfully. And I think in, in terms of what, if people know about the program, and I think a good effort has been made to advertise or spread the word, that I think many people would be very willing to have this done as a more humane way of dealing with the problem. That does have, that does have a goal, and that is eventually, if the neutering of the cats takes place, then the problem will gradually solve itself. As long as, in terms of these, the 200 feet and all that, as long as a common sense approach is used, in terms of what's best for public safety and balance with that, of this concern with a humane way to treat these animals in our existence, I think that it would all work out well. But I just want to testify to the, from the other end, that their organization does a very good job, and congratulations to them. And thank you for considering this ordinance.
Thank you. Anyone else on the, yes, me.
Hi, how are you all tonight? So nervous. It's the first time I ever came.
Don't be. We're your neighbors. Okay? Don't be nervous.
Hi, my name is Holly Morehouser, and I've lived in West Orange for over 17 years. I've known this town and its community for over 30 years. I've worked in this town for over 20 years. I still work in this town. I have to tell you, I live with the oldest, I should say, veteran, who was my landlord for 17 years. I actually maintain two cat colonies. I have permission from my neighbors. I've spoke to my neighbors about it. My house backs up the woods in Llewellyn Park, so I understand a lot of what everybody's talking about, but firsthand, I am the person who is doing what you guys are all talking about. I get up every single morning, I go and feed those animals, I come home, I take a shower, I get dressed, I go to my full-time job. My job has different hours, I work in a medical facility. When I come home, I go out there again, I maintain those colonies. I have taken upon myself before the ordinance, before this has come about, that I knew that we had killed a lot of our animals. So, out of my own pocket, I went down for People Per Animals, who sponsors with you, and spoke with Valerie Wilson, who trained me to become a trapper and trapped these animals myself. I alone have found over seven homes. Now, it sounds like a small amount, but I'm only one person, and I also maintained three in my own home at this time. I just recently found out about the West Orange trap, neuter, vaccinate, and return, so I am willing to give any extra time, even on top of the time that I already give, to help Judy and her cause. It's an amazing cause, and I know West Orange, and I heard people talking about it. When we rally to do something, it works. And I guarantee, because I've been in this town long enough, that I will help you to rally people to fix this cause. It's something that just needs to be supported. Who wants to see animals get killed? Nobody. Nobody wants to see that, cats, dogs, whatever. Really, I hope that you guys pass the law. That's all I really need to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Holly. Any other member of the public? Yes, Anthony?
No, Captain. Council President, I'd like one clarification, if I may.
Yes, Captain, real quick. It's out of, right, but go ahead.
I appreciate the second opportunity. I respect Ms. DeNovo's concern regarding rabies, but the first time that we discussed this issue, I brought in some information from the New York State, I'm sorry, the New Jersey Health Department, whatever the state body is, as to the number of cases of rabies per year per colony within New Jersey, and it's, in Essex County, it's one or two per year at the most. In fact, the last couple of years, I believe, it's been zero. So, I, I respect the concern that rabies should be, at least be considered, but it's not a realistic concern with respect to the statistical evidence.
I do recall you sharing those statistics last time.
And if you'd like, I'd be willing to send it to all the members of the council, so they can reconsider that information.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
All right.
He walks faster, but not a cat.
No limb.
Hi, Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. The last few weeks, when I've come up here, I've talked about our holiday light spectacular, Turtleback Zoo, so I just wanted to share with you the record-breaking numbers that that event has attracted to the zoo this past six weeks. A total number of about 131,000 people came, which practically doubles last year's record amount, which was about 66,000. So, in the span of six weeks, 131,000 people came out. At the event, we also asked people to bring in non-perishable food, new toys, and winter coats. For non-perishable food, we gathered approximately 25 tons of food, which is donated to the community food bank. In comparison, the previous eight years, we collected about 36 tons. So, again, it was just an outpouring of support. Same thing with coats and toys. The, I may be a little off with my numbers, but the coats were approximately 6,000, and the toys were about 7,000. So, again, those are extremely large numbers. All that was, like I said, the food was donated to the community food bank, and then the toys and the winter coats were distributed to a number of groups throughout Essex County, Red Cross, other organizations that deal with less fortunate folks. So, the county executive just wanted to share his thanks and gratitude with the community for coming out. Not only is it a great event, to see the lights and have a great evening, but to know that an enormous number of people are being helped by the generosity of others is a good thing to feel as well. So, we just want to thank everyone for coming out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Keep up the good work. Anyone else from the public? Yes, Mr. Cubey.
Dave Cubey, West Orange Public Library Director. First of all, congratulations, Council President Sirlo.
Thank you, Mr. Cubey.
And it's been a pleasure working with you, Councilman Garino, and also congratulations on your recent adventure. Successfully resolved. And I'm just gonna...
It was an adventure, wasn't it?
It was.
Where's your pillow?
It's in the back. And also, my condolences to West Orange on the fire. I was out riding my bicycle on Sunday, and I came back, and that's one of the things that first greeted me to this town, was seeing that. I love architecture and art, and that was real, really took me aback when I saw that. So, and just in terms of library stuff, just some very quick, we've just recently went live with a new website, but we would appreciate it if people could go in and take it for a test drive. We'd be happy if you would contact us. You can reach admin@westorangelibrary.org with any comments to help us out. If you find something that's not working, or information you're having a hard time finding, please let us know. And I am looking forward to going to the West Orange Hispanic Foundation meeting this Friday. We'll be talking about resources specifically for the Hispanic community available, as well as discussing ways that we can develop an ESOL program at the library, which I think would be very important in this community, which has a very large community of people who speak languages other than English at home, and a fairly large community of people who speak very limited English. So, I think it would be a real benefit to the community if we can work together and get that going. And also, just, just one highlight of a program is Thursday, January 14th, at 7:00 p.m., we have a SCORE seminar, "Three Steps to Engage Your Customers and Grow Your Business", and that is, at the core of, and I'll just read the little blurb from our calendar, "At the core of all the talk about websites, social media, content marketing, et cetera, there are three steps small businesses can and should take. This SCORE seminar shows how to tie together your business's products and services, the importance of websites, and how content marketing is changing the marketing world." And I thought everyone would enjoy hearing about that. So, thank you, everyone.
Tell us about SCORE. I've been to one of those seminars, and they're very productive.
I have never actually been to one. I just know that it's a, it's a, a small business, you know, an organization for helping small business owners to get established and to learn about their businesses from people who are, well, you know, experts, mentors in the field.
Business plans, financial planning, yeah, it's very, very productive. Good stuff.
And we have them throughout the year.
You do? Yes. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
You're so friendly.
This is going to be the topic of conversation. I wish you should get your pillow. Any other member of the public wishing to address the town council? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next item, item number two. Madam Clerk?
We're reviewing the consent agenda.
Yes.
Okay, approval of meeting minutes, public meeting December 15th, 2015.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. No billers. Resolutions, are any resolutions being called this evening?
Before we move on, any member of the council wishes to address the public?
May I? Counsel...
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Council President, thank you, my colleagues. First of all, it is a tragic loss that occurred in our township on New Year's Day, the loss of St. Mark's, an integral part, a building constructed in 1827, a focal point of the downtown corridor, a part of our community, a part of our history. I look forward to whatever the West Orange Historic Preservation Commission, its members, Jerry Gerling, Marty Fidowitz, Sue Wood from the AIA, and Rutgers University. We want to see that cooperation come together, and I'm sure we'll be able to work with the administration, council, whatever we can do, and the owners of the building, because I'm sure they're heartbroken as well as such as we are, as members of the community. It is like a lost child. Basically, you know, people who've grown up in West Orange, have known Main Street, can't think of Main Street without St. Mark's. And I believe it's something that we need to do as best we can do, and within our means to do, to save as much of the structure as possible. It is part of our history. You know, the Tiffany windows, the design, the structure of woodwork, is all intricate parts of our history, and history is very important. I'm sorry the members aren't here, Joe Fagan, the others are not here to hear this, but this is the things that we need to do. And I look forward to doing whatever we can do as a municipality to assist them in restoring, maintaining, or saving whatever we can of the structure. TNVR, something that's very important to me. I've worked very hard with Judy, with Kevin, with Sally, with all the people involved to bring this, and what was said tonight, I think, you know, by Sally or by Kevin, is that, look what happens when you put your heads together, people can cooperate, and we can get something accomplished, something that's beneficial to the community. They've done a lot of hard work. They've done a lot to get their 501(c)(3). They've gotten donations, they've gotten sponsors, they've gotten their volunteers, they've gotten their training. Is it a perfect document? No, but we can still work on it. But it's something more positive. When, when I was council president last year, and the first presentation was made, it was a whole free-for-all, where people were pointing fingers, "We're going to do this, we're going to do this." "Well, if you're not going to do it, we're going to sue you. That doesn't get you anywhere." So, I asked Jane from Animals Partners to come from Hillside. She made a fantastic presentation, the presentation that Mr. Saris, Mr. Kizer was talking about, and it put together where I did, this is what I wanted to do. So, I brought these people together, and Mr. Novo was very, very cooperative, as was Mr. Kizer and all the people involved, that I believe at the end of the day, when we finally finish, whatever adjustments we have to make, this will be a positive document, something that other people can look upon as, you know, an idea for what they can do for their community. You know, killing isn't always the answer, but then again, you have to do things right that benefit the entire community, not just part of the community, and I believe this document, when it's finished, and whenever adjustment is tweaked, I think it's going to be a fantastic contribution to the community. I thank all those people who got involved, and I made a commitment, and I worked with you, and I made sure that commitment was met. And I commend you, Kevin, Sally, Judy, all of you, Polly, for working hard. I mean, it's a thankless thing. You did this all on your own, and you pulled it all together. And then the people that we pulled together to get your 501(c)(3), your federal ID number, these all came to pass, and I look forward to it being, you know, adopted, and it'll be an idea for other communities to follow, and I just want to thank you personally for doing all the hard work, and I'm really proud of all of you. So, and to Mr. Puglisi, you know, with the great things at the zoo, with the county, the great attraction that we have in our township, the goodwill, it shows that all the people that came, the food, the coats that were donated, it's just another good thing for what goes on. To Dave Cubey, you know, the library director, he's been such a breath of fresh air that's come to our community, to our library, which is such a great institution in the township of West Orange, and he's been so cooperative, he's always been there for the community, he always makes the extra effort if somebody needs something, if something needs to be done, and Dave Cubey needs a lot of comments and commendation for the great work that he does. And that's about it. And so, thank you very much, Council President. We're starting off the year... We're starting off the year on the right track.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman McCarty?
Thank you, Council President. Just very briefly, I too salute everybody that's worked on the, on this TNVR program. It's just amazing what the volunteers have been able to accomplish. I just wanted to follow up, if anybody wants to help, anybody wants to contribute, the website to go to is WOTNVR.com. Also has a Facebook page with lots of pictures. And we'll be talking about the ordinance later on. I also just wanted to follow up on Mr. Cubey's comments. If you want to go and look at the public library website, it's amazing. It's, the website address is W O P L dot org.
That's all I have. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Catalina?
Thank you, Council President. What, Mr. Kizer, he's leaving us here. I have just a quick question, sorry. In regards to St. Mark's Church, with the Historic Preservation Commission, we can, now, Mr. Sayers, you're also working with the owners and trying to group everyone together. I just want to legally, where do we stand as far as our input and our persuasion and what can we do to assist the restoration of the church?
I think we can assist in any way that we can, but it's, we don't own the church. It's owned by a private owner and they have to take the first steps. But when they develop or whatever they plan to do, they're going to have to go through the Historic Preservation Commission, I believe. And we're going to certainly encourage them to do what we, try to do what we can to encourage them to rebuild and keep the structure as it is.
So they won't be able to move forward without meeting with the committee then, as far as the safeguard, the owners?
I mean, well, as Mr. Sayers points out, they have to make it a safe structure. I think there's been some conversation already about shoring up the walls. One of the architects spoke tonight about that. Whenever there's an unsafe structure, the potential for a wall to fall or anything like that, you know, the construction official for the town comes in and sometimes an emergency is declared, hopefully you get cooperation without having to do that from the property owner. But I believe that there's going to be something done to shore up those walls fairly quickly. I think there has to be.
Yeah, that seemed important to save the structure.
Right. But that's, that's stuff we do all the time. I mean, this is not abnormal in that sense, it's just this is a very historic building, so.
Okay, that's all I have. And thank you for your work on the ordinance. Now, are we going to be talking about the details of the ordinance later on, or am I to discuss that now?
I assume you're going to finish the consent agenda?
Correct.
And once you get to the ordinance, we'll talk about changes and so forth, yes?
Possible amendments tonight, or if they're too extensive, you may need to go back.
What I'm hoping is that we can resolve the language differences tonight. If we can't, we can't, but I would like to do that. If they're extensive, though, I'm not going to handwrite stuff in. I mean, it's, I don't know how many changes there are going to be. There haven't been that many talked about so far and we might be able to just make some adjustments on the fly and then introduce it, knowing that we're going to have to re-advertise it before it can be adopted. And we'll have to wait enough time so that we meet the advertisement requirements.
Yeah, I think we hit the main points, the feeding in public places.
But let's see what happens.
We'll get there. Yeah, we'll get there. Councilwoman Catalina, are you?
Okay, so before we do get there and we start getting into detail, I want to thank all the volunteers and the organization. I remember way back, I wasn't involved then, but I remember it being a hot topic and it's nice how you all came together and worked with the council over the past year and so and to put this ordinance together. I believe the gentleman earlier, Donald, had mentioned it's a balance and that's what I have to look for tonight, just getting myself caught up to speed with the issue, trying to understand it, asking the appropriate questions and a balance with, you know, I'm concerned about the neighbors of the, you know, of the people that are the caretakers. I'm learning all the lingo, trying to get myself up to speed on the issue. But as far as the caretakers are concerned, and I read the ordinance, that was in Bloom, from Bloomfield, which I thought had a lot of meat to it, and so I'll be discussing that later with my colleagues. And so I just want to let you know, I really appreciate all your efforts and just where my head is at in trying to understand the issue and hopefully we could, you know, find a balance. But I commend you and applaud you on your work because I know what it's like to be a volunteer and to go out and take care of such a sensitive issue. It's, you know, the community, you know, the community is lucky to have you. I'll do that, so thank you. Okay. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Beautiful remarks. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. I just want to say how much I do appreciate all the comments that were made, starting with the St. Mark's topic of conversation that we had, because all of the speakers this evening were professional architects. And I do appreciate their comments. And I think, I guess through our, my planning board colleague, Jerry Eben, I can get their contact information because I have spoken to one of the owners. The church is owned by the International Federal of Chaplains and I did speak to one of the owners yesterday and I'm sure that he would appreciate talking to anyone from the AIA if they could actually serve as qualified resources for them. So I appreciate their comments. Megan's rally cry, I thought, was interesting too, because only a few months ago, the police created an initiative with the Police Clergy Alliance. And through that alliance, there was already this rally call, as you refer to, from members, the other clergy that have come out. So there has been an outpouring of support for the pastor and the congregation. It's just that we kind of have to wait to see how they're going to proceed. And in speaking with the owner yesterday, they have had a professional architect out. So I really do look forward to their report and to see what that status is. And for the ordinances that we're discussing, again, I appreciate all the comments that are made too. I am trying to make sense of it all and I see that through the volunteer efforts, it does look like the program is already in place with or without this ordinance. So I appreciate the work that has been done. And I see that we have two reporters from the Chronicle and tap into here this evening. So all the more information that can get out to the public, I think, is necessary. My concern was about just feeding cats randomly. I think that that, I couldn't understand that because it just seemed that if you're just feeding cats and no one's really monitoring what they're doing or not registered per se, but it would just perpetuate the whole attraction of the cats. So I'm pleased to hear that people that are feeding cats or people that do want to feed the cats know that they should contact the trap, neuter, and vaccinate. So thank you for your comments. I think Mr. Dayborn summed it up. I appreciate what he said about what we're trying to do is find that balance of public safety and the most humane treatment. So we need to get there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much. You mentioned that the press is present.
Yeah.
So thank you both. Happy New Year to both members of the media.
Can I say one more thing?
Judy, you mentioned that taking donations. Where would someone go that wishes to donate to this effort? Do you have any, would you like to share with us any information about that? I know you have a website.
I have a website. Oh, here.
Okay.
Please come to the microphone and state that so we can get that out to the public. The checkout to the West Orange TNVR, we do have a checking account. We're also on YouCaring. YouCaring does take a small portion, but, you know, if that's what people want to do, that's fine. We also have Amazon.com for food donations. There's one woman, she's, every month I get two or three boxes of food from her.
Tell us how that works.
We have, you go to the West Orange, or go to Amazon.com and put in West Orange TNVR and you'll get a wish list.
Okay.
And it's delivered.
Through the wish list process, okay.
Yeah. And it's delivered to our, my house. It's, my basement's become a storage room. But we've been very, very fortunate. We've really been very fortunate. Public has really come out. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Very impressive.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. How many are in a colony and how many like?
A colony is considered two or more.
Two or more, okay.
So, I mean, we've had co-
When you go on these calls, how many people usually are feeding?
I've had 12. I've had three. I've had all numbers, you know. When we know there's kittens involved, and right now that's a little not happening because it's not the season, we sort of get there really quick. If the mother's still nursing, depending on their age, we might let them stay with the mother until they're at least four weeks, but then we like to take the kittens. We take the kittens first and then the mother. I mean, we had a one-week-old kitten the night we were at the sewer behind Supreme Bakery and this boy gets out of his family car and that mother left, talking about the cat, left one of her kittens. And I said, I don't think so, they're all here, you know, and looked exactly like the mother. Now, he said, I just put it under somebody's porch. Well, I followed him. And I kept saying, where are we going? And lo and behold, we reached the destination and he said, I put it right there. And I'm looking, he said, I put leaves on it. It was one week old. I whipped this thing up, shoved it in my coat. It was a bitter cold night in October. Put it on Facebook and immediately had a woman who raises puppies in town, Rhodesian Ridgebacks, lovely. She came the next morning and Lucky, who we named them and the owner decided to keep, came from Jersey City. He wanted this kitten. And we had her for about six weeks. Took a while to get her to eat solid foods and stuff, but, you know, it's just one of those, her chihuahua would pick the kitten up and bring it back to its bed. I mean, it was just adorable, you know, just one of those ones that warm your heart. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you again. Okay, that concludes our public comment and we're going to continue now with resolutions.
Yes, are any resolutions?
We have a 501(c)(3).
Yes.
So all our contributions are taxed, are not exempt.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Councilwoman McCartney, any resolutions?
No, Council President.
Councilwoman Guarino?
No, Council President.
Councilwoman McCarty?
Thank you, Council President. Just two resolutions to be pulled.
Sure.
Agenda item J.
J.
Resolution 1016, resolution authorizing the execution of veterinary supervision services agreement. And agenda item N, resolution 1716, resolution authorizing change order for Oxford Terrace and nearby properties.
Okay, so J and N.
That's correct.
Okay, we have two Js here.
Okay, yeah, mine doesn't line up either.
So it's the first J.
So the first J.
What members?
1016, 1716.
Okay.
Councilwoman Catalina, any resolutions?
No.
No. Madam Clerk?
Okay, so resolution, I'm sorry, is there a motion to move the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Do you want to discuss the resolution now?
Yes.
Okay, so resolution 1016, resolution authorizing execution of veterinary supervision services agreement. Councilwoman McCarty?
Yes, thank you. I just raised this, I won't make this a lengthy process, but I just asked a few questions and Dr. D. Philippus, if I pronounced that correctly, sorry if I don't, has been providing veterinary services to West Orange since 1999 and the contract has never been competitively bid. And I understand he's doing a fine job, but I feel very uncomfortable with not putting this out to bid to see what else we could get to potentially reduce our costs. So I just wanted to pull this because I didn't want to approve it until we get, we get some competition for the position.
Anyone else? Resolution 10-16? Seeing none, will entertain a motion to approve resolution 10-16?
So moved. Second.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Catalina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCarty?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Cirilla?
Yes.
Resolution 1716, resolution authorizing change order, Oxford Terrace, Winding Way, and Dartmouth Road, roadway improvements, change order number two. Councilwoman McCarty?
That's, that's correct. Again, this is the second change order. We approved a first change order and this is the second one for, I think, a little bit under $15,000. Mr. Lepore, the town engineer, provided an extensive explanation as to why this was more than what he had expected to spend. I just, as frequent watchers of the council meetings know, I have a problem with us retroactively approving expenditures of money and this work has already been done. And so I just wanted to pull it so that I can vote against it because I don't think that's a wise financial move and it's not in keeping with what I see as the responsibilities of the council.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Nice question. This certain contractor, do they make many change orders, this particular contractor?
It's, the township made the change order.
Yeah, in terms of this particular vendor, I'd have to go back and look, I can't tell off the top of my head. I can tell you that for the most part, this is, this is a final change order where basically you deal with the final quantities. So it's not uncommon in the final, sometimes it's up, sometimes it's down, depending on what they have to do. That's probably about $5,000 of this change order. The other $10,000 is for the covers for the manhole or the rims for the manholes, which were not, which should have been included in the first change order, but were not. And that was just, that was an omission on our part. So really, this is, this is a very minimal change order and again, as a, as built quantities, it's not uncommon.
If I may answer the councilwoman about that, I spoke to Mr. Lepore about this.
Yeah.
This, what happened was at the end of the project, their part of Winding Way, which was seriously deteriorated, was not included in the first submission for this project. And as they were doing the work in the area, the resident complaints and trying to appease the residents, but also the failure of the roadway to make it, you know, to survive through winter and all that, this additional section has to do with Winding Way. I wish Mr. Lepore was here tonight, but that's what he would explain to me when I asked about that.
Yeah, I spoke to Mr. Gross earlier. I'm going to go ahead and move forward with this, but to Councilwoman McCarty's point and, you know, old pet peeve of mine from back on the school board, you know, as far as change orders go, especially when, you know, there was deterioration, that should have been known ahead of time and may have been worked into the price. I know sometimes you can't see things until you open the ground and I understand all that and that's part of your explanation today. So I'll move forward with that, but the last time we had the change order was in regards to the speed humps and that was something on a street that everyone uses for the high school, maybe we could have been a little proactive on that one. So I appreciate the comment and the concern about worrying about the change order, but I'll go ahead and approve this this evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Our point is, make sure we can identify
Yes.
the need so that we don't have these unforeseen circumstances or these decisions proactively or is it retroactive?
Well, this is retroactive, but Council President, to that point though, our engineer always provides a supporting documentation explaining the reasons for, I think he has been very reasonable and efficient for this many years. I do understand what Joe's saying about retroactive, but things might be unforeseen and I again appreciate the supporting documentation that Lenny always provides.
Yeah, I do want to mention-
And if I could just clarify, as built, when you have a final change order with as-built quantities, many and most of these types of contracts are done with, are line items. You pay per ton of asphalt, you pay per linear foot of this or that. So when you get down to the end of a project, you know, there's always some variance, sometimes that variance is high and sometimes variance is low. So by definition, your as-bills, you know, if you're going to come in, they are already done because you wouldn't know what they were, the quantities are until it's done. So- So, if it's a nominal, you know, I certainly understand the concerns over significant change orders at the end of a contract, and we're sensitive to that. This particular one, as I said before, is really minimalist in terms of the as-built quantities, and we know that the $10,000 was something that was, that we omitted, that should have been in the previous, you know, and is certainly legitimate and needed and required.
And to proof, I appreciate in resolution L, there was a decrease in that project, so I appreciate that.
Okay. Any other comments?
Nope.
Seeing none, we will entertain a motion to approve resolution 17-16?
Second.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Guarino, ah, yes.
Councilman Kropovia?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Cirilla?
Yes. Ordinances on first reading?
Yes.
TNR.
2472-16, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 10 of the revised general ordinances of the Township of West Orange entitled Animals Adding Section 10-15 at Sec to Permit the Managed Care of Feral Cats. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Or are we going to do that, or are we going to discuss and then see whether you want to amend?
It doesn't matter, we can do both ways, right? We can introduce it, amend it.
Well, if you introduce it, then you got a motion. I think it probably makes more sense for you to have a discussion, if you're in a whole new ordinance, you don't want to introduce it.
Okay, so we can amend after initial introduction?
No.
No, not well, then you-
You better not introduce it.
We are having to advertise.
The object is to try to, if we can arrive at language tonight, and I can, we can amend it and make a sensible introduction, fine. Otherwise, we'll just introduce it at the next meeting, and I'll make the changes that are maybe more wholesale.
I'm sorry?
Hopefully, tonight.
So, we'll ask the councilman to rescind his motion.
I rescind my motion.
Just don't second it.
Yeah. Well, we did have a second.
There you go, the councilwoman rescind.
I rescind my second.
No vote, just a second.
Okay. Where do we start?
Well, then, Council President, let me start with a question then, because Mr. Malanga raised a question about the, in the definitions, about the animal welfare organization that should be granted, the 501(c)(3) nonprofit status. Is there a legal reason for that? I mean, this organization said that they are a 501(c)(3).
Well, I'm going to, you know, first of all, I don't care. I mean, it makes no difference to me. Mr. Malanga is correct that 501(c)(3) is a, it's a tax designation. You know, it means they don't have to pay taxes because they're a nonprofit. I don't think you would have to have a not-for-profit organization doing this. I think that the benefits of it from the perspective of the health officer are that it may increase, and also perhaps from Miss Steer, is that you may have a better chance of getting contributions, of getting, of raising funds through grants. They're more likely, probably, to give grants to an established 501(c)(3) organization as opposed to an individual. My main concern is there are other issues that Mr. Malanga raised as well with respect to the numbers of these organizations, and I redrafted, because I had, I think initially had just a single organization, and I tend to agree with them that you don't have to limit it to one, there could be more than one. Logically, we are pretty much divided by Route 280. I can't imagine that there are a whole lot of cat colonies that traverse that road, so, and we're a huge town, you know, in terms of square miles. So, it's a lot of responsibility to do this, and I could see in the future, perhaps, if there's an interested organization that also wants to do it, you could have one doing, the south side of 280 and one doing the north side of 280. There's any number of ways, I'm sure, you could break up the town. Maybe you could even have four.
Let's have the police do it in zones.
Right, I mean, I don't know, but, so, I'm not, I don't think you have to limit the number. I think in the beginning, we're probably only going to have the one, because they're established, but there's nothing to stop us from in the future having more than one. I do think it's important to have clear lines of communication. The health officer has to know that when she calls somebody, something's going to get done, so I would not want to see a whole lot of, you know, sponsors doing this, because that would create communication problems, accountability problems, whose fault is it that something isn't getting fixed? So, there's something good about one in that respect, but I do think you could logically have more than one.
Any other comments, Council?
Well, I think that goes to the point about letting people know, that if we do let people know that this is already a proven organization, then I think we feed into your program.
Because you want to have at least one.
That let people know to do that. No pun intended, but just.
Good one.
I think the other comment about, I have to say, as the owner of a childcare center, I would want the 200-foot radius to, around schools and childcare centers to stay into effect. And I appreciate the comments that were made by Mrs. Steer about how the feeding patterns can be reconditioned. So, if they are on public properties, we're saying, I do believe with the health director that public space should remain public space, and if there is a way to recondition, that we could work toward that end. I know she wants to make a comment, I mean, how do we want to work this discussion? Because I need to hear from them, too.
Did you just pull out, sort of, you just specifically talking about schools and nature?
Oh, no, that was the second, the other comment about public space.
Let me just say while she's approaching, the 200 feet is really an arbitrary number. It was in the model ordinance. I believe there's other towns that have 150 feet, you know, any number of feet, you know, could be put in there, and it also may be possible to not use a number of feet, but use a qualification, as Mr. Malanga suggested, that, you know, showing some potential demonstrable danger. The problem with that is, how do you define, how do you define that?
Well, I don't want to find out. Right, so that's why I appreciate the ratings.
And my biggest concern in drafting an ordinance is that it not be vague, because if it's vague, it's not enforceable, and I want to make sure it's not arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable. So, I get concerned when you use wishy-washy language to define something, and I don't know what a potential demonstrable danger is. I mean, it's just, you'd need to come up with some better language than that if you wanted to go that route. So, I think we, that's why I just stuck with 200 feet. If somebody wants to change it, we can do that.
I wasn't looking to change that. I think what I, my point was that I think that is a standard, as I said, with the planning board and the zoning board, that is a standard radius.
Which is probably why it was used.
Okay, Judy. Councilwoman, you have a question for Judy?
Yes, please. No, no.
You have a question for her?
I do.
Yeah, you asked her to come up?
Oh, no, I think, I don't think so, I think, but just part of the discussion, that's all. I don't think I had a specific, no, I was just saying, I appreciate the comments that you made about reconditioning. I'm sorry.
You had a lot of questions.
There you go. I'll wait my turn.
No, go, I think it's a discussion. I think this really has to be a discussion.
I read in the Bluefield ordinance that the sponsors provide training to caretakers. Would you be objective to that, or do you provide that already?
Yeah, we, I know I took it twice, and a lot of them, yeah. Being a caregiver really doesn't require much. We do the trapping, we are all certified, certified by the county, and it has its carry, the training is done by people for animals. When we do get a new trapper, I usually work with them at least a couple of times when they go out, before they're on their own. I'm sorry, I forgot about my job, my whole gosh, and I-
We're down a mic.
Okay. I, being certified, can now show them what to do as far as trapping. As far as a caregiver, they are aware that if they see an animal that is not feeling well, or is not doing well, to call us. Haven't had that problem yet. Also, to supply shelter, and I have a couple of people making shelters, my husband made another one over the weekend, so, and they go from a big plastic container lined with styrofoam with a hole in it, filled with straw, to a wooden structure with a second level for sleeping and a first floor for eating. So, they can go from one extreme to the other, depending on what talent the person has. The 200 feet is a large amount. I mean, this room has got to be 50 feet. I guess that's going to be, you know, I just never knew where that number came from either. It's not a state law, but it might have something to do, came from, like you said, the planning in applying for permit or something.
I think it's just standards, I saw in other towns also, I was looking at other towns.
The 200, yeah. I'm not familiar with Bluefields, I'm familiar more with Hillside, Maplewood, another town, can't remember, anybody remember? Carney.
Carney.
Carney is extremely successful. Extremely successful. Their geography is a bit different, it's mostly industrial, so they have large colonies.
Right.
And, you know, when you're dealing with a large area versus this house, that house, another house, it's, makes it a little bit, the numbers go up a lot quicker.
Any other questions, Councilwoman? Not for Judy, thank you so much.
So, Judy, but I do have a question now for you.
Anyone else for Judy?
I do. Thank you, Council President. There was a comment made about the feeding. Ms. Morehauser said that she feeds in the morning and then again in the evening, and that seems to be what the health director was saying would be more appropriate than leaving food out all day or overnight.
You're not going to see, it's really not, I don't find it to be an issue, most caregivers do bring it in. Water is to be left out at all times, that's the norm. You're not going to see raccoon, possum, skunks during the day, which is why we thought just bringing everything in by dark, you're good. You're good, just like I won't leave a cat in a trap overnight, because an animal can come and do harm to that cat, it has no way of defending itself. So, I really, it's kind of hard to say, "I'm putting food out at seven, but I got to get back there by eight."
Right.
And then, what if somebody puts it out at 10? I know someone that doesn't feed until after her job in the morning at 9:30, so then she'd have to go back at 10:30. You know, having it out all day, you're not going to get any wildlife coming out there nocturnal, and you really don't see them.
Just so everybody knows, I mean, this section, which is on page four going into page five, at the bottom of page four going to the top of page five, 10-15.5 caretaker requirements, letter E. I mean, I sort of made this up myself, after going back and forth with all of the players here about how much time the food should be out, what time it should be out, and so forth. And my reasoning was that if you don't, if not to be placed out before dawn, so after dawn, that means you're not worried about nocturnal animals coming and getting the food. It addresses, and then until 8:00 PM.
Right.
8:00 PM, of course, is after dark at this time of year.
Yeah, right.
It's before dark in the middle of the summer, but it permits someone who works during the day to, at least whether it's before work or after work, to do this, number one. It keeps, you can have food out for no more than two hours during that period, it doesn't matter whether it's the beginning of the period or the end of the period, but you're limited to two hours. I thought two hours was a reasonable number. It doesn't mean you have to leave it out two hours, somebody could leave it out an hour in the morning and an hour at night if they wanted to.
Yeah. That's easy if it's in your backyard. It's not so easy if you're at a location, be it industrial, or municipal lot, or something like that, where, you know, unless the person wants to sit in their car for an hour or two, and then have to come back. It's a lot.
Yeah.
So, Ken, would it be possible to just put a period at the end of that, where it says, "Placed outside before dawn and must be removed no later than 8:00 PM, period," and then leave off the rest of that, that each colony feeding site, the food to remain, you know?
Well, at each colony feeding site?
Or even dark.
I'm saying period after 8:00 PM.
Yes, as opposed to a time, because as you said, it's dark 5 o'clock now.
Right.
Okay, I mean-
And then I'm just saying, delete the rest of that sentence.
Right.
Okay, but you have the health director raising her hand.
I guess the question then becomes-
I think there's no way to monitor that, though. I mean, how do you-
Well, I could, and must be removed by no later than nightfall, or, I don't know, it's like-
That's vague.
Dusk, dusk, I guess, dusk would be.
We didn't make anything up, really, you know, Ken said it, we made it up after reviewing a lot of different procedures. Now, and one of them was Hillside, their procedure is they feed only during daylight hours, they feed only the amount of food required by the cats in the colony, they leave food out for a maximum of one hour per feeding, no more than twice a day. So, that was Hillside, and they're the people for animals, so we kind of consider them the experts. Maplewood, their people made a manual up, which said that they would remove it in 30 minutes. The idea was not to leave food out there, that the cats would know to come, the food was out there, they would come when the food is out there. The idea is not to leave it out there all day long for them to graze. They're going to feed the cats, they're going to come, they're going to eat it, they're going to go. So, that was the idea behind the limitation in having the food out there for extended periods of time, and that's why we put it in there. The water, I know they say the water should stay, that's not the water, it's the food. So, I mean, I understand, but there may be instances where they just can't do it there. Everything isn't going to work all the time for every situation, so, you know, we have to have some guidelines on how the program should work, and, you know, I don't know, you know, I don't know what to say as far as, I just, I don't think a person should put food out and go to work and then come back, and it, that's not the way it's supposed to work. You put it out, the cats are going to feed, you take it up. So, you know, we looked at other agencies that had more expertise than we have, and that's what we followed when we put the ordinance together, as far as the feeding.
I guess logically, right, you could put it out when you get off. I know, I'm just trying to be practical, you put it out when you get up, you get ready for work, and then you take it in, so that-
They're supposed to get used to the time you're putting it out.
That's what it is, right, there you go.
Right, they're supposed to get used to the time you're putting it out.
So, that's really, that would be the one hour, the two hours that you're talking about.
Would you like to propose any amendments to that section?
No, I'm just trying to make sense of it, that's all.
Oh.
To leave it out for no more than two hours, that's pretty much what we're saying.
Okay. Anything, any other questions for Judy?
No.
No? Yes, Councilwoman Kropovia?
If I could, I look at this as a community type of project, because cats don't notice property boundaries, and we're asking not only the cat lovers and the animal lovers of our town, but also people who don't care anything about animals or cats, to perhaps make their property available for these colonies to be part of their roaming area, their territory. And I want to just give some consideration to the fact that there may be people out there for whatever reason, it could be because they're a lack of knowledge about the program, or the fact that they just don't like the cats or what they do on their property, and I want to try to minimize the conflict that might arise because of this. I know we talk about nuisance, we define nuisance, and we also have provisions for complaints, but I just wonder what people think about making a requirement as part of the 200-feet notification issue that's already been raised, that we actually provide materials, communications, that explain why this program is being implemented, describe the success over the long term, and then provide for potential conflicts in the short term in terms of telling them how to make a complaint, or how to identify a nuisance, and maybe you don't even have to go through the town if you have a complaint. If they have the organization's contact information, they can just contact and get this resolved sooner. And I just wonder if that might be something that we could, we could add to the ordinance. something that we could, we could add to the ordinance, just to fulfill that sort of communications process. And it may help reduce conflict and friction going forward. Because, of course, in the long term, the whole idea is to minimize the cat colonies and, in a humane way, but in the short term, you're still going to see a lot of cats. So I just wondered what people...
Councilwoman, do you have, like, a suggested language for the amendment?
I do have some.
But while you're looking, though, Council President, while you're looking, when you're talking about donations that have come in, I think so far the money is going, any money that they do donate is going back toward food. They would need quite a sum to produce material that you're, is that what you're suggesting? You're like, Maplewood has a booklet that the health director referred to. They would have to raise quite a bit of money to create some kind of booklet, which I think is important, but that's why I noted that the two reporters are here to get out more information, to get the program started. And, I mean, the council chamber was full on our, you know, last year when this first came to our attention, so there are quite a few people out there. I mean, if money is generated, then it could go toward material. I think that's a great idea, but I don't think at this point in time there's funds available to produce a booklet.
We have, this amount of information that we've given out at many of the town functions.
Microphone, please.
Uh, sorry. I'm sorry. We have a lot of information that we give out and put on our table whenever we're at any kind of function within town. We were at the Jazz Festival, Halloween, the Christmas, the farmer's market.
Street fair.
Yeah. From Alley Cat Allies, which is the best. They, they cover it quite well. There is also in here, Councilwoman Kocovia, a section for nuisance.
Or pages there.
Judy, tell us where it is.
Ten fifteen dot point nine I.
Pages six.
Pages six, thank you.
Yes, I'm not suggesting changing that provision. I'm just, I'm saying if, if people who are irritated or do not like the fact that there's a colony living next door to them.
Right.
Or across the street, perhaps if they understood better through, and I'm just talking about maybe a piece of paper, front and back, with a bunch of contacts or links to electronic, this is 2016, but, you know, that, and we put it on the website, we make it easily accessed on the town website. I think if a lot of people understood the purpose of the colonies, and certainly understood all of the volunteers and that are there to help, and if they do have a problem, it can probably be fixed.
Very easily.
I just think it will just reduce the amount of friction and conflict.
Right.
That, that's all I'm suggesting, and it's, I'm just throwing it out.
Yeah, and again...
Council President, I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with that, but I don't know that it needs to be part of the ordinance. I mean, my sense is, from talking with Judy, that, you know, you have sort of had a public relations program of your own, with respected neighbors and so forth, and it's worked pretty well so far.
Yeah.
And so I sort of feel like if it ain't broke, maybe we shouldn't be fixing it. But I, but I think it's good to encourage that kind of, you know, outreach or whatever you want to call it. But I think you're already doing it.
Yeah, we do. We do speak to a lot of people, you know, and everybody has a different issue. Like, one guy just, he couldn't see it because he didn't like the fact that they tipped the ear.
Yeah.
You know, but it doesn't hurt them. It's done while they're under anesthesia. And we had quite a conversation at the Christmas fair, but as far as these nuisances, we explain to people that once a cat is spayed or neutered, these disappear. The howling disappears, the not covering feces maybe, or whatever, because that's all a territorial thing, which cats are, very territorial.
Here's my question, because this is a problem I haven't wrapped in my head around this. So, I, I, I like the program.
Mm-hmm.
But when you bring them back, so, they're going back to a neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, residential neighborhood.
Right.
And you're bringing them back, they're still coming to that house to eat, correct?
Right.
So, they're still walking across the neighbor's property, or maybe hanging in a neighbor's backyard, and they're maybe doing things that are annoying that neighbor. That's the part that I get stuck on, because where I commend all you folks for coming out tonight. I also had emails today from people who don't want their neighbor to be a caretaker. So, how do we, you know, and I looked for that in other ordinances. Let me just finish my thought here. So, in Bloomfield, they have that the caretaker, using department-approved notification process, sponsor and or caretaker must notify all continuous residential units to deep, and the owners of such units are proposed TNVR activities. Proof of such notification must be submitted to the department partner commencing with TNVR activities. The Board of Health should have the authority to permit or forbid proposed TNVR activity. So I know that's a little tough language, but again, that will satisfy and give the opportunity for the neighbors to have discussions. Because you could have a neighbor that you know will do the right thing, and you could also have a neighbor that won't do the right thing. And for me, for me moving forward with this, that's where I get stuck with this, because if you have the right neighbor, this is a great program. If you have a neighbor that may not be a good participant, it could be a nightmare for, for someone.
Yes.
And I don't know, maybe Teresa could speak to that.
That's where we come in and try.
Yeah, but the communication would be key with you.
Who was at that meeting when everybody came? There was a woman, I think she was from here, who had a lot of literature and offered to assist with literature, to hand out to residents. I don't know if we can go back and look. I remember that.
I think that's the alley cat that you're talking about.
And it was also about telling people about how not to abandon cats and that kind of thing. So I don't know. She seemed like she was willing to cooperate and maybe provide information to give out, but I don't know if we can look back at that. We didn't put that in. I know that some other towns did. I think we were trying to be cooperative and trying to get ordinance to move forward and, you know, not have more stumbling blocks for the program to continue.
But I think it's important that we do find that balance.
I mean, it may be, it may be an issue. I mean, if a complaint, if there's a complaint with the cats being on the property, it's something that has to be resolved, because people certainly have the right not to have cats on their property if they don't want them there. So, the organization is going to have to try and away to resolve the complaint with the neighbor.
That's why I issued the number of the colonies, because if someone with, you know, one cat comes by or two, but you have someone that has, don't forget, once you pass the ordinance, it's passed. It could always be amended in the future, but if you have someone that has ten cats, your neighbor has ten cats on the property, that could be problematic for another neighbor.
Mm-hmm.
That's how I'm just trying to play devil's advocate here.
Council President, I have a question.
Can we have a mechanism for addressing that situation?
In here.
We've been there with this already.
What section would that be?
Page seven.
Yeah, it gives them an opportunity to resolve the complaint.
If there's a problem, it gives the sponsor, the caretaker, an opportunity to resolve the problem for that colony or that cat.
In forty-five days.
That was my other issue, forty-five days.
Right. And this was, we originally had sixty days, and we reduced it to forty-five days because we thought sixty days was kind of a long time. Judy, of course, would like to see more time, and you might want to see less time, and we try to meet somewhere in the middle.
Well, they said sixty, and I said thirty, so he made it forty-five.
I hate to tell you, I think, I think Bloomfield has ten days.
Teresa, you okay with forty-five?
Well, you know, we're trying to give them an opportunity to relocate them or...
Yeah, I understand.
So, Council President, I have a question, though, for the director.
I was just curious to know how many cats are normally in a colony. Is there a...
The average, I would say, is seven, on average.
And right now, most of the colonies are having complaints lodged, I guess.
I haven't had any. I haven't had any.
Well, that was my question to the director. Since they, you know, really have been working on this program already, like I said before, without the ordinance, have you received any complaints, the way we, I mean, you had five hundred?
Well, not knowing where the colonies are or...
No, but I mean, has anyone called to say that they are bothered by cats in the area?
I'd get complaints that there's stray cats. I wouldn't know where they were from.
Where they are.
You know. If I could just bring back that two hundred feet while I'm up here.
Sure.
We know when they're going to have the colony, they're going to feed on the one property, but we also know that cats roam. And when you think of two hundred feet, if you think of a house, that's a fifty-foot lot, it's only four houses from a school or daycare center. It's not that far away. And, you know, what I'm concerned about is we don't want to have children interacting with these cats. So, I think, you know, we need some kind of buffer, that they're not near the school, because we know they're going to roam, they're not going to stay on the property where they're fed, and hopefully they're going to be vaccinated. But if they're not, you know, that's my concern. Rabies is always the concern, and, you know.
Teresa, I want to go on record that I personally support that provision, just by way of experience. There's a beautiful cat in the neighborhood, orange cat, bit my hand once. I just, just thought it was beautiful. I was just, you know, wanted to say hello. And then during the St. Cloud picnic, it bit a little girl around the corner from the house. And I guess my question is to the professionals, I mean, obviously, these are aggressive, an aggressive response that was probably learned because of being out there. I mean, I'm not, I mean, I'm not an expert, but is there a way that that can be rechanneled, that response?
Well, it's, as we tell our children, you don't approach a dog, but you don't, you don't approach a feral. When we're teaching, we teach on trappers, if, you know, a track has a lot of holes.
Judy, have to come to the microphone, please.
Yeah. Yeah, and I just, I guess speak to the, that provision, the two hundred feet provision, you know, children around feeding population.
Yeah, well, first of all, I personally, in my own experience, cats run. They see people they don't know, they take off. But, okay, so let's say you do have an incident where a cat seems to be friendly and a child or even an adult would approach it. You don't do that. You don't do that with a cat or a dog you don't know. And, you know, you always approach a dog with your hand down.
Right.
And a cat, I, I mean, I deal with ferrets all the time now, but, I mean, you just, you, we teach the trappers, you don't put your hands, you always lift by the handle. You go to lift like this, that cat's either going to claw you or he's going to bite you. You put your fingers in there. First of all, if they're scared to death, and they're acting on adrenaline.
Sure.
But I would say it's the responsibilities of a parent or the adult to teach children, like they taught them about a dog, not to approach a feral cat or one they don't know.
Yeah, it's a group calculation. It's an issue.
But, you know, I don't have, the two hundred feet, I can live with it. I can live with it. Because if there's an issue, we're going to have to move that colony away from that area. I don't know that there's any feral cats in or near a school. I know the situation down here at the community center, they were moved. They were moved.
And my other question, while I have, while I have you up there, I just want to make sure I understand this right. Kevin spoke to this issue in regards to having a feeding site at a public place. I don't think that the language says that you can't, it just says that you need approval.
By who?
Right. But it just says unauthorized, I believe, unauthorized.
Yeah, and if we have a situation that's, you know, sort of needs immediate attention, like a mother and a sewer with more kittens.
It says shall not be, shall not be located.
Shall not be located, yeah, okay.
Shall not be located.
Yeah. I mean, what do we do? Can't wait a week.
I don't know if the administration thought about, what is your perspective, Teresa, in regards to this language?
I, I have thought about it. I mean, I would much prefer to have a named individual or a position named. It could be the health officer, the health director. It could be, I suppose, well, I don't, I mean, somebody who's responsible for public property would be a logical person, which is the way.
We don't regulate schools by the separate entity.
That's why you have to have a discuss, that's why you need to have a discussion with the schools. They're not going to...
Well, this is not, this doesn't deal with the board of ed, this deals with public property.
Municipal lots, public property.
It could be school property, or it could be.
But I'm saying, school property, they have to, their property...
Right. Well, and that's, and that's why I guess I wound up with the appropriate official, because I don't know who that person may be, you know, and it's going to be a different person if it's a public school property, if it's going to be, or if it's going to be town property. But we can certainly, you know, make determination as to who those people are and give them to the sponsor, so that the sponsor will know who they have to contact, and the sponsor could presumably contact them, you know, even on a weekend at night, if need be, if they needed quick approval.
Yeah, because many a times it is an emergency situation.
Yeah, but then you're bringing them back to the public property.
My position is that there, there should not be cat colonies maintained on public property. Ken put in the caveat to get permission. I don't think there should be colonies on public property. Not in a park, not in the municipal parking lot, not at the library.
But I think, I think what Judy's...
Not at Colgate Field. It's public property to be used for public...
Right, but I think what Judy, I think what Judy's point was, you know, the cats in the parking lot behind Supreme Bakery were there. You can't, I mean, nobody told them to go.
That's a parking, what parking lot behind Supreme Bakery?
The municipal.
Oh, the municipal lot. We have a colony there?
There was. It's been moved, I believe, right? I mean, you...
We've...
No, they put it back.
Oh, okay.
They don't belong there. They don't belong where the public is.
So what do you suggest gets done with them? What do you suggest we do?
Well, I suggest you don't have cat colonies on public property.
They were there. We were called in to take care of them and...
They should be moved.
I guess, well, well, maybe there is a remedy. Well, let me, let me, let me just address what she just said before I forget, because my understanding was, you had earlier indicated that you try sometimes to move a colony by changing the feeding location, correct?
That's the point.
Okay, well, but if, if we have a colony that begins on public property, nobody put it there, that's just where they decided to hang out. Cats do what they want to do, okay? So, if you, if you put a feeding location there temporarily in order to trap them, inoculate, you know, get rabies shots and get neutered, then instead of putting them back on that property, perhaps if you put them on a different property, or whether it's gradually or immediately, why would that not work?
But the caregiver is, what do I do then? They've been feeding these cats for a long time, felt comfortable coming to us because they knew we were not going to put them down.
Okay, well...
And one of them stayed neutered, but they've been feeding. I don't have anybody going there. They're still taking care of it.
Judy, speak to the mic if you can. Just, I want to make sure that the public can hear your, your commentary. And, thank you. Okay, so going back to this issue, to, do we want to name these officials, or?
I, I think maybe we can't, because there are different officials in different places.
It's two different public...
We can aim for the school district. They have to...
Right. It may make sense to leave it like this, and instead of putting them in the ordinance, just providing the appropriate positions or names and phone numbers to the sponsor.
So do we need to amend that language to?
No.
No, it's...
All right the way it is.
Okay.
I think what we have to, it sounds like where we may have a problem is whether we're, the issue may be whether we're allowing them on public property, period. I mean, that's where the issue seems to be, so.
And Miss Say, what is your perspective?
I, I disagree with, with allowing it to happen on public property. I think if they're on public property, they should be moved somewhere else, because you're opening up yourself, you're opening yourself up to a can of worms here. As, as Teresa said, you could be in a park, Colgate Field, you could be at, you know, up at the pond, you could be on a, on a school board, piece of property, and you have kids going to school there every day. I mean, I just, all I'm saying, and what happens if it's in the parking lot, out in the back? What happens if you have a bunch of cats out in the back? You know how many people come in and out of this parking lot every day? I mean, I just personally think it shouldn't be done on public property. If it is on public property, you should move them and bring them someplace else. That's my opinion.
So if they can't be moved, where do you suggest? I mean, I don't know, I can't put them on somebody's private property.
Well, I'm just saying, if, what would you do if you had a bunch of cats out in the back parking lot? You know how many cars come in and out of this lot every day? You know how many cars come in and out of this lot every day? And then you're, and all you're saying is because there's volunteers that are going to come here and feed them that we should do that. But they're going to be in danger based on the fact that there's so much traffic in here.
Right, but what I'm saying also is those cats have been there. The people that have been taking care of them and feeding them called us and they know that this population will eventually eliminate itself. And that's the whole idea about purpose of what we're doing.
I get that.
But I don't know where I could move them.
Volunteer.
Pardon?
You'd have to find volunteers.
Reach out to volunteers.
Put a voluntary home.
Not for a feral cat. You can't put a feral cat in a home. They're wild. I mean, they're not socialized.
Can I ask a question to the attorney for, in regards to liability issues? So, we pass an ordinance which is basically given our blessing if you were to amend that section. Now, we amend that section, we're given our blessing to have this in on a municipal lot. Now, someone gets bit and, you know, so is that, isn't that liability on our end?
You know, perhaps, I doubt it, but, I mean, is it possible that somebody gets through the town for something like that? Sure, it is. Whether they would be successful or not, I tend to doubt it. But it's not like we're giving our blessing to a cat biting somebody or infecting them with rabies. We're just, so.
I just sat through a lot of lawsuits in my past 10 years. Crazy lawsuits, so.
Yeah, and these cats have all, when they're released, they've all had their rabies and distemper shots with the spay neuter and the ear tip as an identification. But they've been there for, they've been there for years, obviously. They've been reproducing for years.
What are we doing now?
Do they do nothing?
Do they?
If you, but if you become aware.
They're in the lot.
What happens?
That's what's happening now. Well, unless somebody complains, then I guess she would get involved.
The idea of not being on public property is we don't want these cats interacting with anybody, with the caretakers. They're keeping them alive. They're wild cats. They're not cats you should pet or go close to or be near. They're never going to be tamed and there's no reason to be near them. So, we don't want them on public property where people are getting in and out of their cars to go to stores and they're running by and, you know.
To me, to me, the biggest issue is, is public property is too wide. When you use the word "public property," that means any public property that's owned by the township, or as you're now saying, the Board of Education. That's a lot of areas that, where there are a lot of people that traverse in and out every day. And do you want to do that in a public area? I, and I disagree, and I don't ever disagree with our attorney, but I do disagree with him. I think that creates a liability for the township. If we authorize that and say, yes, you can do that, I think that creates a liability on behalf of the township. That's my personal opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I support putting in a provision that would require an approval, okay? Because there may be areas of public property, like a park, like a remote location. And we're not, we do have county property too in town, so we didn't, we didn't think about that. We do have.
I know that we can't.
We can't, we have no jurisdiction over that.
We have no jurisdiction.
Right, right, right. But, but the point is, is that there are areas out there. I mean, as we stop identifying potential feeding sites, we're not going to figure out, we're not going to find a place where to put these cats. I mean, we're, you can't do businesses, you can't do condominium or private without approvals already, right? So it's, it would be really difficult to identify sites as is. I think that there may be public areas out there that, you know, maybe, maybe would make good feeding sites. And if we leave a provision that would require like an approval, I.
I don't disagree with that. But the problem is, is what about the flip side of it? When it's on a piece of public property that, it's not going to be conducive to good health or the health for the animals or issues with people who are traversing those properties. If you're going to say "public property," that means all public property.
That's correct.
Unless you're going to sit here and say, okay, Colgate Park's not included, the high school's not included, then you're going to be putting a whole list of public properties that you're not going to be able to do this on.
Right now, the way you read, Ms. Sayers, is case-by-case basis, right?
No, no public property.
So it has to be with approval, right?
Right, right. It would be considered on a case-by-case basis.
My, my thinking about, when I drafted this, my, my thinking was, after talking with Judy, that the purpose was to be able to go in and set up, I thought, a temporary site in order to feed, trap, neuter, vaccinate the cat, not realizing that they would then be brought back to that property. Although, if they were brought back to that property, it would be vaccinated and neutered, which would be a good thing. So, but I don't, I do understand the concern of continuing to feed from that location on public property is potentially a problem. So maybe there's a way to meet in the middle here and.
Well, but you're, excuse me, you're making a statement for the school board without even talking to them. That's my point from the beginning. So you're including them in this when it's not even our property, it's their property.
But we can't control the school board.
No, but you have them coupled in here in this ordinance.
But as a public entity, that's all.
But it does give them the ability to say yes or no.
But why, they may not want that stress.
We can take that out, I mean, we can take the school board out.
That's true, you're right, you're right. Yeah, you're, that's true.
There's a 200-foot barrier, right.
And I apologize, I just felt I needed more time on this because I didn't have the time.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is there a way, like, let's say you came on public property and you did what you had to do, and then take them and move them someplace else? Is that feasible? Something like that feasible?
If I knew where to put them?
So, the issue you're saying is, is you can do it, but you're not sure where you could bring them to.
Well, that's number one. Number two, cats are very territorial, so I can't put them with another colony because they'll be a battle royale.
Right, right.
I personally think after we do take care of these cats, the area is a lot safer than it was beforehand where nothing was being done. Cats, feral cats also don't tend to approach people. They run in the other direction.
Right.
So, I mean, they've been there for years and there's obviously never been a problem. Didn't even know they were there, did anybody? So, and I do think when we get done with them, they're a safer cat for the public. You know, we ended up down.
I think if there's a complaint, then we go back to moving them.
And then we go back to our 45-day portion of the ordinance.
Right.
But I have not had, and like I said, when we were down there, people approached us. One person stole our trap because they thought we were doing a bad thing. So, yeah, yeah.
Colleagues, any other questions?
About this particular section of the health.
No, just in general.
If I could, Council President, I think Mr. Kizer asked me if there was any language that I wanted to suggest, and I just typed up four sentences that I'll just read off and see if this is a major issue.
Which section would it go on there?
It would probably be a new section.
Okay.
Each caretaker or their respective sponsor is responsible for notifying property owners within 200 feet of their property of the care of the cat colony under the ordinance. The notification would include the name and contact information of the caretaker, as well as a summary of the TNVR program as provided by the ordinance, as well as information on how to make a complaint about a potential nuisance, or how to contact the sponsor to address the concern. A similar description of the program, sponsor contact information, and the complaint process shall also be posted on the Health Department section of the town website. You can hear, you can hear in a lot of the discussions tonight, there's a lot of discussion about, we, we as public officials don't know a lot about this. Can you imagine people out in the community who don't know anything about this? I, again, I just reiterate, I think this would help reduce the friction and encourage acceptance of the program.
Well, with all due respect, that would be a tremendous amount of work to be, to contact every person within 200 feet of the person who has feral cats on their property. We have not, we've had communities, I mean, three, four houses that gave us donations to do this. So, again, I haven't had this problem. I don't, maybe Obama's going to fall, I don't know. But I have not had a problem to date with anybody complaining that, oh, my neighbor's feeding cats, you know.
I think with the nuisance provision, it's already in here, the definition is already in here, I think it takes care of what Councilman Kocoviac is trying to accomplish. Because if there is a complaint, if there is a nuisance call, then you have 45 days to address that issue.
Exactly. And I have to say, a lot of the people that I've been working with lately are people who have been trapping on their own, out of their own pocket for quite a long time with no one's knowledge. They are now helping me, I help them. We just sort of found each other. And so, a lot of this has been going on for years.
I see that.
For a long time. Couple of people here.
For over five years, myself.
And more.
And it's gone from, and, sorry not to be loud or interrupting you, but it has gone from a large amount. And that I was only able to, to fix the female. You know, you're supposed to fix the male and the female, but I can't afford to do that on my own.
Right.
So with this town's community, you know, it would be a big help to drastically pull that population smaller. What I was doing was that my now, I have a company. So, in the last five years, you know, the company I have, now I have a cow.
Yeah.
So there it is. It's one person.
And what she says, for her, it was affordability, but a lot of people think, oh, you only have to fix the males. No. It doesn't work that way. Because a male can smell a female in heat a mile or more away. And they will find her.
No, I'm not doing that.
Councilman Kocoviac, thank you, Judy. Councilman Kocoviac, you outlined some potential language. Would you wish to make a, propose a, an amendment to this? Or do you want, you want us to just discuss it? This is in regards to the 200-feet, 200-feet notification and the other issue with the notifying about complaints?
I'm suggesting this, I just read the language. There doesn't appear to be much support. If there's support, I'll be glad to discuss it further. But if there's no support, then, you know, we've already spent enough time on this.
I just want to continue the dialogue.
Yeah, that's fine, I just.
I can't see as a volunteer group that they're going to be able to do that.
Yeah, what I'm envisioning is, what I'm envisioning is a single piece of paper that the caretaker walks around and puts in the mailboxes of all of her neighbors, his or her neighbors. That's, that's what I'm picturing.
That doesn't sound, from the sponsor's perspective, like it's feasible. Look, I mean, there's been a lot of back and forth, and I'm not stopping anybody, obviously. But it seems like there really isn't that much difference and there may not be much to change here. And the biggest issue, my sense, is the public property issue. And that's an issue for both the sponsor and for the health officer. And I guess the question is, can we resolve that tonight? If we can, maybe we can go forward. If we can't, then maybe it makes sense just to put this up. We'll try to get it done in the next week and get it up, put it on the next agenda for introduction and do it then.
I have no problem with, I mean, we stopped trapping down here because I knew this was in the ordinance and I don't want my trappers for myself to get in kind of trouble.
Judy, I'm sorry, can you speak?
I'm sorry, Judy. Say that again. There's still a few cats in the municipal lot that need to be trapped. I think we've done the mother and four kittens and probably four to six. I'm not sure, I'd have to look at my papers now because that was a couple of months ago. I have no problem with the 200 feet. But I'd have to have somebody notify that I can, know that we can be in touch with to give me approval to trap on municipal lots. I don't know if you want to say "public" or "separate them." And then if there's still an issue after 45 days, we will do what we have to do to resolve the issue.
And again, I think that the language as is, is okay for that. It's just that we have to, for your purposes, we need to designate who those people are. We don't have to put that in the ordinance. Fact of the matter is, those people are going to change over time. Somebody's going to have a position for some number of years and they're going to leave and somebody else is going to come in and replace them. So, that's a moving target.
And old.
I'm sure that Mr. Sayers would be able to direct us to the right person.
Right.
Yeah, for municipal lots, the schools are covered.
Or in the case of the school.
They're covered.
Or in the case of the school board, somebody in the school.
Well, as a 200-foot, I don't think that they would.
That's my opinion. But it doesn't have to be. No, no, I agree with that.
Okay. So, I guess the question is, do we, do we need to change this ordinance? I mean, it seemed like the hours in, on page four to five, maybe I should put dusk instead of 8:00 p.m. Is that, was that agreed upon?
Okay.
I still have, I'm sorry.
It's okay, let's, let's finish this. One second, Councilwoman. Let's allow Mr. Kizer to finish his comments.
Well, I think, you know, again, I, my sense is, there's no strong disagreement. There's reasonable agreement with respect to everything. Once we make that change, the only question is, is the public property issue sufficiently dealt with in this language? And if everybody wants to read it again, and I don't, I mean, the council hasn't taken any strong position with changing particular language. If you want to, please do.
In regards to feed, the feeding sites in public property? Or the?
C, in, on page three, C, you know, I think the language is adequate the way it is, but if somebody feels strongly enough about it and wants to change it, they got to make a proposal.
Okay. Well, I think that, Ms. Kizer, I think that as the government units cited, if it's the municipal parking lot, it would probably be the business administrator. If it's the, you know, if it's a park, it probably would be the director of.
Well, no, no, we don't have to put those things in the.
That's correct. But no, but the point is, no, I'm agreeing to your point that, you know, we can't, we're not going to get too specific because these names might change. And we're not going to get into titles because, you know, the administration needs to sit down and figure out, you know, how do we define, you know, where do we have these public properties that, that may come into play? I'm agreeing to your point.
Can I just say one more thing?
Mr. Kizer is done, Judy. Are you done, Mr. Kizer?
I'm done.
We don't have a feeding station in the municipal lot. People there are feeding them.
Sure.
So it's not being provided by us. There might be a situation where we have a caregiver that will take care of a colony. But we are not doing it down there.
Okay.
And those people who are feeding in a municipal lot, who are not caretakers or the sponsor, are violating our ordinance.
Right. The existing language.
Right, and so, I mean, if they were, if they were found.
If they become a caregiver, then they're within their right.
Right, then they would be accepted.
Right.
Okay, Councilwoman, you had another question?
Yeah, my, it's not in here, but, and I may not have the support of this, but I, and I, again, I appreciate all that you do, but I still feel very strong that if someone in a residential property is, is living next to a caretaker, they should be notified. Now, whether that's 200 feet or, like I said, Bloomfield has two units deep in circumference. I mean, whatever, again, whatever could be decided upon, but I feel very strong that your neighbor next to you should, you know, have, you know, be in, you know, should approve this with you and, and be supportive of it. I don't think they should be blindsided and not, you know, wake up the next day and realize this is happening next door to their property because they're going to cut right through their backyard or their front yard.
Okay.
No, no, I understand what's happening right now, but that's what I feel strong about.
Can I respectfully help the argument? Okay, so in that situation, Mr. Kizer, so what happens? Isn't there a provision in there that we can file a complaint?
Forty-five days is a long time.
Let's say I, let's say I have, you know, in my backyard, I, I, I put together a feeding site, you know, there's a, you know, 10 cats coming in, my, my neighbor's complaining, my neighbor to the, to the left is complaining.
If it's a nuisance.
What, what happens?
If it's a nuisance and they complain, then the sponsor's gonna have to address that. There are ordinances, I don't know if it's in Bloomfield's or not, where they do, where there, there's a requirement that neighboring properties be notified.
Yeah, it's in there.
Right, so, and, and then the question then is, okay, which properties do you have to notify? The ones on either side, sides, back and across the str, I mean, you know, you have...
Who enforces that?
But, you, we could add that to this. I don't know what practical problems it creates for the program.
It's a large problem. I mean, it's time, and I, I can't, as people that are feeding, taking care of a colony probably have points on the job.
Judy, go, go to the... Could, could, anybody who speaks, that we'd appreciate if you'd go to the microphone, 'cause it's a recorded meeting, so...
Thank you. I think one of the concerns is the confidentiality of the locations of the feeding sites, because most of the sites are unknown to neighbors. They don't know about that. If, once, once you start alerting neighbors, if you have a, a person who's an animal hater, a cat hater, that gives them an opportunity to either do harm to the animals or create problems for the caretakers. So, I, I think that the notification issue, I respect you, you're wanting to have people be alerted to the fact, but I think they can create more problems than it's actually curing it. So, I think that if there's an issue, we have a remedy within the ordinance. If we have a neighbor who says, "These cats are a nuisance, they're digging up my garden," we have a mechanism to address that. To simply provide notice, I think that's a potential for actually causing problems rather than resolving problems.
Well, and that, that's not a bad point, and I, I, I have to, you know, say that in my own neighborhood, there's plenty of cats around, you know, feral or, or, or house cats that are left out. I don't know, I have no way of knowing. And I have never had a problem, I've never complained, I'm familiar with the orange cat I think that, that Victor is talking about, because I live in the very, basically the same neighborhood, and I've seen that cat. But, it's not, you know, it doesn't bother me. I have no idea if there's somebody in our neighborhood feeding cats or not. How would I know? I don't see it, but...
Council President, I think I agree with Mr. Malanga also, and I think that that's part of this education to the public, that if, that the provision is in here, that if you are bothered by something, or, you know, you consider this a nuisance, then you know to report it. So, I think it's really all covered in here.
Yeah, the only thing with the nuisance part, I, I, and again, 45 days is a long time if you're having the issue with the neighbor. And, and I know, I, I know it's hard on the organization, and, but I have to think of both sides, and that's part of my job, is to think of both.
The number is normally 60 for most of them.
Well, like I said, Bloomfield has 10.
The, the, the number is more 60. People for Animals is what, Hillside, I think you'll find, 60 days. Maplewood, I'm not sure. But, the average number is 60 for moving. It's time, it takes time. You know, you, you have to move the food source slowly and get them to follow it. I've reduced it to 45. I really can't go any lower than that. I mean, it's, it's gonna be really tough.
Thank you, Judy.
I appreciate that.
Councilwoman, we respect your perspective. I don't know if you wanna move further in perhaps a proposed amendment?
Yeah.
Or, just, just for discussion?
I, I would like to propose amendment.
Okay.
Of the two unit, maybe take the language using a department-approved notification process, sponsor and or caregiver must notify all contiguous, and it says a caregiver as well, doesn't have to be on the sponsor, it could be on the caregiver.
Which section, just...
Well, it's not there. This is in Bloomfield's ordinance. I wanted to take this item C on page two of Bloomfield's ordinance, and that's why I said from the beginning, you know, this may not have the support, I could pass it around if you wanna read it, but...
Sure, we'll give it to council.
Well, you, I mean, I can, I can look at it later if you want, I just...
If we weren't deciding this tonight, we could, we could wait, but if you wanna decide tonight, then you're gonna have to read it now.
Yeah, well, Councilwoman, we're, I think we're in track, in track to possibly finding a resolution tonight, so we wanna, we wanna, we wanna see if we can discuss this tonight.
Yeah, so, so you'd have to read it now and see if you agree. If not, then I don't, you know, it's fine.
Why don't you read it out, read it out loud and see if everybody, how people feel about it.
Using a department-approved notification process?
Mm-hmm, that's...
Sponsor and or the caregiver must notify all the contiguous residential units too deep in the owners of such units of proposed TNVR activities. Proof of such notification must be submitted to the department prior to commencing with the activities. The Board of Health should have the authority to permit or forbid the proposed TNVR activity.
Well, see, now you're getting the Health Department involved in a volunteer organization.
Well, the bigger prob, the bigger problem with that language is that it's, it's, it gives discretion to the health officer without giving any objective criteria to guide the health officer and making a determination as to whether to approve or not approve. That's a big problem.
Yeah.
If somebody challenges that ordinance, it would not be upheld.
What I usually like to do is get an opportunity to call Bloomfield and question them and, and get a little more information before making a suggestion of that nature, but I, the time didn't permit, so I, I'm just bringing up the, you know, it's, it's just an idea.
Right, I mean...
You don't have to support it.
And from a terminology point of view...
I'd like to make the comment that, that the fact that somebody else, another town does it, doesn't mean it's legal or a good idea, although it may be both.
I don't know, I haven't investigated it, but I, you may know.
Okay, so, do, do you wanna make a proposing amendment?
Yeah, if, if that's what we're doing here, sure.
Okay, do, do I hear a mo, okay, do I hear a...
Make it in the form of a motion to, to...
I'll, I'll make a motion.
To amend.
To amend the ordinance with item C. Yeah, that's okay.
I, I don't, I don't see that happening, yeah.
I'll second.
Second.
Councilwoman Casalino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garino?
No.
Councilwoman Kupoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
I think in all fairness, what you're saying makes sense, but I think that the nuisance provision in here would cover that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I, yeah, I echo that. I'm sorry, you didn't vote yet.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Oh, I'm, no, I'm voting not for the amendment.
Council President Sorella?
Yeah, I vote no, but yes, I understand.
I understand.
Trust.
My head is not spinning. What does that mean?
It means that, you know, we, we're in favor of the spirit, but it's just the implementation.
I think it's difficult, it would be difficult for the caretaker as well as the sponsor to be able to do that.
No, I understand that, and that's why I, but at the same time, I can't move forward without suggesting something.
Well, respect it, Ms....
But, I also think that this is part of that educational outreach, that the caretaker, or that, I'm sorry, that neighbors need to know that they have access to the health director or someone if they want to register a complaint. Rather than that animosity between the neighbors, so let them know, it's, know that you can do that with them.
Yeah, and I, I understand Ms. Malanga's point, her point.
So, okay, it, it, it sounds like, subject to the amendment that on page, well, 10-5, 15.5, caretaker requirements, paragraph E, amending 8:00 PM to dusk, which would need to be offered as a, a motion by somebody and then adopted. The rest of the language is acceptable, at least for now. Remember a couple of things. One, this is indicated as a pilot program, like anything else this council does, you can change.
Right.
This does force you to, if you follow the ordinance, and hopefully you will, to review it periodically, at least annually, you could do it more often, look at the statistics and make a decision as to whether to keep going, to stop, to make changes, and so forth, so...
Thank you for your assistance too, Mr. Kizer.
Okay, well, can that just raise, excuse me, that just raises another question, though. Is there a limit on this, or this is now the ordinance? Are we going to review this in one year to see?
It says, that's what it says in here.
Oh, to review after one year?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, right, subject to an annual review.
It doesn't have a sunset provision. I don't believe in sunset provisions. I'm never gonna put a sunset provision in unless somebody tells me to, and it doesn't work.
Okay, so I need...
So, the only, right, so I'll make a motion that...
Wait, I need a motion to amend the language in section 10-15.5.
E.
E, yes. Changing 8:00 PM to dusk.
Right, that it's supposed to be the daylight hours. And make a...
Dawn to dusk.
Take a motion to, dawn to dusk. And make a motion to amend.
We have a second.
Okay. Councilwoman Casalino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukowiac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Sorella?
Do you wanna make a motion?
Council President Sorella?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to approve on first reading, ordinance 2476-16.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Is there a second?
Second now, it's good.
Okay. Councilwoman Casalino? So, we won't, the next, the second...
This is approving on first reading.
Yeah, so, second reading, we can make another if we, if I could...
Discussion.
Well, there's gonna be a public hearing, right, so, you know...
So, there's just first reading?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I'm gonna abstain. Councilwoman Garino?
Councilwoman, yes.
Councilman Kukowiac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Sorella?
Yes. Thank you all for that constructive dialogue and all your hard work, and the administration...